Motion to approve with an edit.
Second, we know what the edit is.
Yeah, the edit is, there's a statement of mine where it goes lots of construction and and it just tapers off and to forgive me, but I don't remember what I said after that. So we could just leave off that.
Actually, I found one as well in the second page two, under discussion of possible action, second paragraph, one line, that's also an incomplete sentence, so strike that as well.
Now, a second with this. Part of the motion.
Any further discussion or edits? Okay, so any hearing, no comments or questions? Can I have a vote? All in favor?
abstained.
Abstained. Okay. One abstention, okay. All right, moving up, we need to add an agenda item, adding, can I have a motion to add student report to agenda item after the agenda item on board member comment?
So move.
A second.
All in favor? Okay, all right, student report. Moving on to public comment. If a member of the public would like to comment, please come up to the podium, announce your name and street you live in in town, and if you could please limit your comments for two minutes. Thank you.
Hi, Shirley Melnick, Crickwood Road in Reading. I have a couple of questions, and I'm sure they'll be addressed later when you talk about your project updates on the Nest project. But I guess one of the major one is, there was a report in the News Times about chronic absenteeism and throughout the Danbury area, and it seemed to me that we were pretty high in terms of absenteeism for the 2022-23 school year. We were at 16.2%. Ridgefield was at 8.5%. And I'm wondering if you can attribute the differential to whether the students weren't getting the services they needed. I know that Ridgefield had a summer program that was funded by funds from COVID. They had an expanded school year program, and I'm wondering if the differential in our numbers and Reading's numbers are attributed to the fact that Ridge, I'm sorry, Ridgefield's numbers attributed the fact that they did more enhancement throughout the year than we did, and COVID funds perhaps could have been used in our arena to help the absenteeism rate come down. I mean, I don't understand why the expenditure per pupil in this town is very high, and I don't understand why our absenteeism rate is 16.2%. So if someone can address that for me. The other question that I had was going back to the permitting of the Nest project, and I'm getting it out now because you can't ask questions during the presentations, but I saw in here that they talked about enhancements and paving of a junior parking lot. My development has no idea of what that is all about, so I wish you would address that. And also, the expenditures to date, I know there have been some problems down there. How much of an overrun was there to fix those problems? I mean, I saw survey crews, and I know that you had to rewire a whole lot of stuff down there to make it functional. I know you're waiting on the lights. I'm hoping that they are the dark sky lights that Amy Pardee said we were going to be But I guess my concern is, what is the expenditure to date on this project? How much money do we have left? And how far along are we? Before we discuss the field house and concession stand and all this, where are we in terms of fixing the problems in the physical plant? We have an art room, a ceramics room, a band room, a theater arts program that is in need of attention. Bathrooms are needed attention. There's still a tarp on the equipment building, a blue tarp, it's been there forever. And obviously, there's some mechanical equipment there that probably is rusted out already. But those are, I guess, my questions, and if you can take them in any order that you want, or if you need to have me reiterate them, I most certainly would. And I guess the last question I have is, you're talking about all this lighting. I'm assuming that because you approved the field way in the back, that the lights in front of my house are not going to be on until 10:30, 11 o'clock at night? Because that's a problem for me. That was supposed to be remediated by putting the field way in the back. Now I see on your minutes that the Fields Committee is discussing enhancements of a junior parking lot. Why do we need a junior parking lot? We have a student lot at the top, we had 80 spaces in the back, we're enhancing that by adding 200 more spaces, so we're going to have 280 spaces. What are we doing with all this money that we're buying parking spaces? Is what I want to know. And is that necessary? And is it necessary then for every student in the school to have private transportation where they can park all over the place? Should there not be some limits, perhaps, on parking privileges? I mean, I just don't know. And I'm hoping you can address that. You've got the big parking lot that's loaded with kids, you've got the junior parking lot that holds, I thought, 60 or 70. Then you have the 80-something in the back, and now you're adding another 200, and now you want to improve the junior parking lot area down there. I have a real problem with what's going on here.
If I can, excuse me, if I could ask?
I'm overrun. Those are my questions, I'm hoping. Thank you, Cheryl.
Okay.
You want to address?
Thank you for your comment. I will get a, well, this is not, public comment is not for dialogue. Many of the questions have been responded to in prior meetings and will be probably, I believe, discussed in the course of this meeting. So thank you for the public for your comment. Any other public comments? Any board member comment? Okay, moving on to new item, student report. Owen?
Thank you. I'd like to begin this meeting by saying, can you believe the traffic? I mean, like, oh my God, at this time of night, like, it's just, it's uncivil, you know, it's holding up to me, it's, but anyway. Hello, my name's Owen Fellows. I'm a junior here at Joe Barlow, and this is my second year as the representative to the Board of Ed. I'm so pleased to be here tonight and to be here not only at the beginning of school year, but to be here at the first board meeting that I'm present to this year, and to already celebrate some of the wonderful accomplishments that students have already been able to achieve despite the fact that the school year has barely even begun. But I'd like to begin first with the point of our annual open house that is going to be taking place on Thursday, September 21st. It's going to be scheduled from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., and parents will have the opportunity to meet with classroom teachers and school counselors, social workers, and members of the administration. This is a great event, and it's, and we're hoping that it's going to be well attended as it almost always is. Now, to move on to some of our, to what will pretty much be for the rest of the speech, student achievements, the National Merit Scholarship Program has recently announced the 2024 commended students. I am personally pleased to announce that there are three semifinalists and five commended students. The end for this year, the 2024 Joe Barlow semifinalists are Virginia Gray, Nathaniel Noah, and Ian Lent. The commended students are Jack Decker, Siddharth Gupta, Martin Jarra, Jackson Mendez, and Mackenzie Seking. Congratulations to all of these students. This is a great honor, and I personally wish them the best of luck with where they are going from this point onward. To a more somber note, we have an award at the school that's addressed to the events that happened on September 11th, 2001, when United Airlines Flight 175 crashed into the Twin Towers. On this flight, a Barlow alumni of the class of 1987 died at the age of 32, along with his family. This crash was tragic, and to honor his life, members of Peter's family have created an award at Barlow that is meant to honor his memory and to represent the characteristics for which he gained such a good reputation here at Barlow and in the rest of his life. These characteristics are dedication to social justice, appreciation of cultural differences, love of the arts, concern for the environment, and volunteerism, and sensitivity to issues of peace. The recipient this year of this award embodies all of these. He is Senior Jackson Reben, and in all of the interactions I have ever had with him, he exemplifies all of Peter's characteristics to the greatest degree, and it is an incredible honor to know him, and I wish to congratulate him on this incredible award. Congratulations to Jackson Reben. To move on to the athletics department this year, the athletics department is proud to announce, and I am happy to announce, for the second time in my history as the representative to this Board of Education, that the, that we have, that Joe Barlow has won the C I A C Michael's Cup Award. Now, I've said this before, but what makes it unique about the Michael's Cup is that unlike many of the other awards that I'm 100% going to announce later on in the year after we win more things, is that unlike all the other trophies, which is winning something on the field, or winning something as the result of a tournament, or in some other sport, this is one, this award is one on sidelines and in small community events, and in the essence of the community that has been especially cultivated here at Barlow's athletic program. This is because this specific award addresses sportsmanship and fair play, something that for the second year in a row, I have the pleasure of announcing that Barlow excels in. This award is not only a testament to students who are part of the athletic program, which, by the way, in the fall sports, there are 269 students participating in the athletic program this year, but it's also a testament to all the parents and community members who make, who play a huge part in making the athletic program the wonderful institution that it is. And I am sure that if I hold this post again next year, I will announce it again, and then my successor again, and again, and maybe a few more times again, because this is truly something that is an enduring part of what the athletic program here at Barlow is about. And like I said, we are also going to win some trophies in the other category that I mentioned. And I didn't think it would happen this fast, but at the very first swim meet of the year, Audrey Gill, a junior here at Barlow, has already set another school record, breaking her previous record that she set last year by over 1.5 seconds in the 200 individual medley swim meet. Again, the first of the year, already breaking records. And also, not only did Audrey succeed, but the whole team won over the meet, at the meet, over the, over bundle, 92 to 75. With that, I would like to conclude the noteworthy news and congratulate all of the students that I mentioned here tonight. Thank you.
Board members have any questions or comments? How does it feel to be back to school?
It's good. I was wondering how things do.
Perfect timing.
Thank you, Owen. Thank you. Thank you.
Administrative report?
Well, good evening, everyone. It's lovely to be back, and we have an agenda item further down on the agenda that addresses kind of the start of the school, so we will be moving some of those comments further down in the agenda. I know Dr. Almeida wanted to make some brief comments for his administrative report, but I'll also call on you lower down to talk about the opening of school. So, Dr. Almeida, can we start with you?
Yeah. Good evening, board members. Good to be back. I just wanted to bring something to your attention since it was such a large part of us being here last year and proposing the academic centers. I just wanted to bring a little update on how that's going. I'm sure we're going to have much more detail later in the year, but our academic centers coordinator, Scott Reimold, I had asked him recently how things are going, and he reported, we've identified over 20 students incoming, oh, they're ninth graders, they're no longer incoming ninth graders, but grade nine students who, again, we thought needed a little additional support. So we contacted the families, we proposed with input from the families and scheduling these students to of their study halls on a rotation, so they don't go every day, we still want them to have a little bit of social interaction with their peers, but they're scheduled to go into the academic centers. In addition to those 20 students, right in the beginning of the year, our councils received feedback from some of the teachers, got some additional students, mostly ninth graders. That was our focus for September. We've additionally seen an increase in just drop-ins. As assessments get scheduled, our numbers of drop-ins always increase, so there seems to be a good stream in there. The ILs, I just met recently with instructional leaders, they reported they're enjoying going in there and just seeing different students, because the ILs are scheduled in there in addition to the people that run those centers. So they reported some really positive things, because for many of the ILs, they don't, they only see their students that are scheduled to them in their classes, so to see students of different grades come there for help has been very positive. So overall, like I said, it seems to be running well. We moved the third academic center, which is run by Mrs. Coppola, to the front hallway, so they're like literally right here, all three, back to back. We call the Academic Center Quarter. So again, I just wanted to give you a little bit of update of how that's going. I'll make sure later in the year, the next month, I'll have more information on numbers and things like that. So just a quick update.
Okay, great. Any questions there? All right. We are pleased to introduce Mrs. Catherine Matts. Ms. Catherine Matts, who is our new direct, our pre-K to 12 Director of Special Education. If you recall, we changed the model at the end of last year, and we presented during our tri board what the new model is going to look like. We included this new model in our strategic plan, and tonight, we're pleased that Catherine can join us. Catherine's going to introduce a little bit and talk a little bit about the work that she's been doing so far this year, and also introduce the new Region Nine Supervisor, Nicole Fennick. Nicole is also here tonight, so Catherine?
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you. Lovely to meet you all. So far this year, I started right at the end of July, mostly my focus has been on opening all three districts worth of schools and getting to know everybody. In Barlow specifically, that's been hiring staff, scheduling students, scheduling staff, that's been the bulk of our focus here. As you know, my position was sort of restructured across the tri district. That created a supervisor of special education position, which is a new person to Region Nine, who I'll introduce. And then we also had the resignation of the Special Education Department Chair over the summer, right before I got here, so we have a new staff member in that position as well. So essentially, Joe Barlow has had a complete turnover of the Special Education Leadership Department. I could not say enough nice things about Dr. Almeida and the team at Barlow for kind of welcoming us and getting us up and running and helping us understand, you know, how things work here and how we can most be helpful transitioning in. I would say it was a pretty smooth transition. I hope you would agree.
Yes. Sorry.
Leave me hanging.
I'm dumb.
No, it's okay. So on that note, I did want to introduce Nicole Fennick, if you want to come up and say hi.
I asked her, there's a seat right there for Nicole.
Oh my goodness. So Nicole is coming from Easton, where she's been the supervisor of special education in Easton for the past couple of years, so I did want to give her the chance to introduce herself. Again, very smooth transition. And, thank you, Nicole. Nicole comes with a wealth of background and experience in the area of transition, and what that means in special education is services for students in the areas of post-secondary education and training, making sure they have the skills to access if they want to go to college, if they want to go to a trade school, if they want to just do a training program for some type of work. Post-secondary employment, so pre-vocational skills and some vocational skills, can you independently obtain and maintain employment? And the area of independent living, if students require services in that area, and that has, you know, quite a broad spectrum of skills associated with it. Can you manage yourself? Can you manage your routines? Can you participate in leisure activities? It's quite a broad umbrella. So Nicole comes with quite a vast amount of knowledge and background in that area, and we've been leveraging that as she's transitioned, and we're really looking at the continuum of transition services that Barlow offers, and making sure we're thinking about, as the year unfolds, is there anything we need to enhance, and going into the budget development process with that in mind, you know, anything that needs a little bit more attention there. So we're just up and running. As Dr. McKinnon shared in May, when he was presenting about the tri district director position, we have started working on a draft strategic plan for special education. I think you presented four major buckets of work that need focus. We further refined that. I don't know if you were planning on sharing any of that tonight, but what we'll do next is take that draft strategic plan for special education, run some focus groups, get feedback, make sure we're on the right track, and be adding that to the website for ER9 strategic Any questions? I know I talked a lot.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Glad to be here.
Nicole, it's not a welcome, it's welcome for you in Region Nine, but it's, obviously, we're very excited that you joined us from Easton.
Me too. I felt immediately at home, so thank you. I look forward to working with everyone.
You don't get to go. You have to speak.
She's running.
No, you can go. And I just, Dr. McKinnon, Catherine did mention, we also hired, she's not here, but Sheila Sacco-Pedro, which is a name that many of you that have been in the district for a few years know the name. She was a special ed teacher, and she's our new department chair for special ed. And I apologize, I'm going to throw a really quick little, we also hired two new special ed teachers, Nora Curly for our bridge program, Erica LeVega is our literacy teacher, and not in special ed, but our one hired, not in special ed, was Andy Poland for Technology CTE. So just really good hires. This was the summer of special ed hiring, so, which is a reflection of what's happening in many districts, but we were fortunate to land some top, top quality people. So just wanted to mention a few names.
Okay. Thank you. And Mrs. Scalfani is actually featured primetime on the agenda further down, so we just have, last but not least, Dr. Pearson, you go for a curriculum update.
Thank you. So my report outlines a lot of the summer work that happened, highlighting Region Nine's involvement in that work. I want to call your attention to a couple of larger pre-K through 12 initiatives. One has to do with evaluation. We will be sharing more information on our pilot evaluation plan implementation at another board meeting, but I do want to provide the update that the state of Connecticut released new evaluation guidelines at the end of next week, and we were so not entirely surprised, but really pleased to see that the work that we've been doing in this area now for over a year is absolutely confirmed by these new guidelines. So this is, should be a smooth transition for us in all three districts as we put together and sort of memorialize the good work into a plan that we will submit to the state at the end of the year. So that work really features informal, non-evaluative feedback as the focus of the way that we provide feedback to our teachers to support their own professional growth. There have been many research studies showing the ineffectiveness of giving someone a number and thinking that that will lead to growth, but more to give them narrative, supportive, inquiry-based feedback that's tied to the work that they do in classrooms and tied to core indicators that we have here in ER9. And so that work is quite comprehensive this year. We're working closely with a consultant, full administrative days. In fact, this week, we will be spending two full days in all five buildings conducting what we call trend walkthroughs, which is really gathering baseline data about what we see that's happening in classroom that ultimately will result in learning for our students. So that will be going on for the next two days in our buildings. The second has to do with SRBI, which we are now calling in the state of Connecticut, MTSS, which stands for Multi-Tierred System of Supports. I think that we just like to keep everyone on their toes, so we just change up the acronyms every couple of years and try and trip each other up. So we are referring to it as MTSS, and I will piggyback on what Dr. Almeida says, which is that the academic center suite of supports and the new leadership that we have in our academic center coordinator is going to go a long way in this building to help us to support students in a lot of different ways. High schools in general, Region Nine is no exception here, high schools in general have a very difficult time with the implementation of multi-tiered systems of supports, because this building is based on a schedule, and schedules tend to be quite structured and set. So we had terrific teacher involvement in this building and with the leadership position as well, really saying, how are we going to make this work for our students? This is the right thing to do for our students? And so indeed, we are. We are scheduling students into the academic centers. We are working to create really clear goals for these students, so it's not just a matter of you're coming in to receive just support in general, but what specifically, whether the student has self-identified an area of need, or just an area where they would like to improve their performance, or if a teacher has said this is a clear area need, and we are developing plans that will be monitored. So if this is the area of need, we think it will take about six weeks to see some progress. We're going to check back in with you, we're going to report out, and we think this will be, this will result in some strides in academic achievement for our students, and to help them feel good about what they're doing as well. So I think that our students in this building for many years have taken advantage of time that's been offered by teachers at lunchtime, before school, after school, and it's great to see us use schedule time to help us support them as well. So that's my update for this month. I'm happy to take any questions. I included also a graphic that just shows the updated visual for MTSS. This will be posted on our website once our website is more fully developed. I just, could you just speak briefly to the third or the second page of your report, which is curriculum revisions? Just the timing and where that stands? Sure. So I will be sharing with our Region Nine Curriculum Committee much more detail regarding curriculum revisions. The work that occurred over the summer, you can see in the detail. There are two major areas where the teachers are devoting their energy with respect to curriculum revisions. One has to do with content revisions, sometimes because it's a new course, sometimes it's because there's been some type of a change in standards or a legislative mandate. And then the other large bucket in terms of revisions has to do with reformatting curriculum documents for public viewing purposes. And so you can see in the work here, the work that occurred in humanities was mainly had to do with formatting, and within STEM and business, much of this is informed by student performance, really looking at the strengths and needs of our students, and then the pacing that we map out each year. So this isn't necessarily major curriculum change, but it's really looking at topic by topic. If we see that the incoming students are going to need four weeks, not three weeks, on a particular topic, the teachers work together to make those adjustments so that they can begin their year in an informed manner, really thinking about the students as well. In terms of wellness, the revision had in part to do with the formatting, and then within the PE aspect of wellness, some shifts in terms of some of the sports and conditioning courses to shift some... and conditioning courses to shift some of the content based on what they've seen in terms of students' growth and ability. So I want to say, I could look more specifically at what this is, but I think in talking with Mr. Santangeli, it had to do with a shift between nine and 11. So still within the bands of the standards, but just looking at student readiness in the content. There was some additional work done in one of our wellness courses that were adjustments that were more at the lesson level. So not a substantial change that would need to go through a curriculum committee, but slight adjustments.
That's a question with respect to the teacher evaluation. Is that, I guess, what qualitatively has changed? I think it's more, you mentioned the narrative and more feedback. Do, do the other topics come into place, like the tiered system? Does that come into place in the, in the narrative feedback? Or what, what's the biggest change?
Right. So for about a decade in, in really all districts in Connecticut, we have been required to provide teachers quantitative feedback, both in terms of their formal lesson observations, and also in their end-of-year rating. So our teachers are rated on a, on a four-point scale. And that's been in place for many years with some exceptions during COVID. The big shift here is that legislators and certainly researchers have seen that that is not making a big difference in terms of student achievements. So the labeling teachers by level and giving them that type of quantitative feedback, the hope is that if you can improve teacher performance, in turn, it will improve student performance. That's not borne out in the research. So the shift in Connecticut is that the new guidelines are focusing on differentiated structures for teachers. So meaning that rather than saying it's a sort of one-size-fits-all approach, we have more flexibility with the type of, of observation structure that we have for teachers. So there's always one structure in place for tenured teachers and another structures for non-tenured teachers. But what we believe here in ER9 is that we want to, as administrators, leaders, evaluators, spend more time in our classrooms, giving teachers a lot of feedback about what we're seeing in their classroom, and not necessarily do so for the purpose of putting something in their personnel file. But to provide more feedback to people, and then on top of that, say, and now we will also, of course, do the, you know, the more evaluative type of observation, but less of the evaluative and more of the informal feedback without putting a number on it. Right? So that's, that's a big difference. We, we sort of, we look at the degree of evidence that we have that something is occurring. So for instance, we know that we are looking for higher order thinking, evidence of higher order thinking. That's something that's pretty familiar to everybody. If I go into a classroom, I could say, I see anything from no evidence of higher order thinking or substantial evidence that questions are being asked that are stretching students to analyze, then synthesize, think critically. Right? And then there are all of the, all of the levels of evidence in between. So there are certainly degrees of evidence that we see, but the difference is that I'm not going to give the person with all of the high-level A4, and the person with, with very little evidence, A1. Instead, my qualitative feedback would be, this is what I am seeing. I wonder if you might elicit more discussion if you were to ask questions that don't have a yes or no response. Next time I come in, I would love to see X, Y, and Z. That kind of thing. So more qualitative in nature.
Stephanie and I are presenting at each faculty meeting a 30-side presentation on the teacher evaluation model for next year. And we met over the summer and Stephanie worked with PDAC committee last year to kind of work on some of the changes for this year. But they include some non-negotiables from the state. In other words, the state is saying, you need to do these things, which I, I don't want to get into now because I'm still presenting this to the faculty. But we've also identified some power standards or some high-impact instructional standards. I talked a little bit about this at convocation. And so we've identified, these are some things that we think have a high impact in the classroom. And there's a new rubric or set of standards that we're using. And that, that set of standards is actually designed for classroom teachers and for specialists. So that is also very productive. And this is the piece that Stephanie was talking about, is the idea that, let me, let me just go through here, that there's certain non-evaluative feedback focused on coaching, which are the green circles here on the left. And there's still individual teacher feedback that's focused on the, the descriptive language according to the standards as well. So it's very detailed. It's great work because the, one of the non-negotiables is that you align teacher evaluation with your DIP and student metrics and your professional development. And when you align teacher evaluation and teacher growth with student achievement and professional development and training, that increases teaching and learning, and improves teaching and learning. So we can provide an update with that for you if you'd like in the future.
Just a quick question. So who, because it sounds like a big change and an important change, who, who are the, like the boots on the ground who go into the rooms and actually provide the, the feedback, the non-evaluative feedback? Or is there a team that you identify? How does that work?
So it's, it is the same team of evaluators that already exist. We haven't broadened that team at all. So in this building, our department chairs do most of the evaluations, but the larger administrative team would be going into classrooms and providing a lot of that non-evaluative feedback. And there will be times when the full administrative council will walk through all five buildings. And we wouldn't necessarily give individual feedback, but we will be walking through buildings and, and collecting information about teaching and learning, because that helps us to really think about the district improvement plan and the programs that we have in place and what we're doing across the whole district.
So a teacher could, in theory, receive feedback from you or from Dr. Almeida or from a department chair?
They would not receive direct feedback from me.
Okay.
They could, in fact, receive, they will absolutely receive feedback from a department chair.
Okay.
And they might receive feedback from any one of the administrators here in Joe Barlow.
And, okay.
Yeah. So I would be giving just general feedback about the whole school. So I might go into 10 different classrooms and collect a lot of information, but it wouldn't be specific to the teacher. It would really be looking at the amount of evidence that I have that we're implementing the core indicators.
Based on the feedback you got from the evaluators?
Based on what I'm seeing in classrooms.
Okay.
But I'm not giving that specific information to the teacher, because it's not looking at evaluating an individual. It's more looking at where are we as a whole system, if that makes sense?
Yes.
So, so we have trend data. So we have beginning of the year aggregate data, and then at different points in the year, we'll benchmark.
So some of the information we may collect in the aggregate may be around, will be around our indicators, and we'll be looking at trend data in these categories. So intellectual risk-taking, learning intentions, success criteria, feedback to students, hot questions, content progression, challenge level, modeling and visualization. And so that's the kind of data, when we go in, we look at it entire school, we're seeing growth over time. But a teacher may get individual feedback according to those indicators from their direct evaluator.
So it's qualitative, more subjective data in this, this kind of feedback?
I wouldn't say subjective, because we're really looking at, Dr. McKinnon showed you very specific evidence descriptors. So those evidence descriptors are taken from the Connecticut Core of Teaching. So we're really looking actually very specifically about what we see, and then providing confirmation of what we see. So the focus is in your art class, I saw you asking these higher order thinking questions.
Okay. So you have like a checklist, so to speak, as an in-class evaluator?
There's the continuum. So Dr. McKinnon showed a continuum that goes all the way across from very little evidence to a great deal of evidence. There it is. So we are looking at anything, because again, I said, we're not rating 1, 2, 3, 4, we're looking at evidence on the right-hand side there that would show we're within the proficient or exemplary range. But very specific evidence. Yeah, it's very interesting work. And I will say that the, the evaluators, the leaders as well, the teachers have been, have been quite receptive to the new ideas.
It is interesting. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have administrative reports.
Just one more administrative comment before we go forward with discussion and public action. There's a member of, of the public tonight that brought up chronic absenteeism. And I just wanted to let everyone know that we are looking into that data. I think the number was 16% and so on. And so we're specifically looking into how we actually code what, who is absent in our schools, what those codes are used for. We're looking at, do we have consistent codes and how that data is reported to the state? And we actually think that by looking into the data and looking into how we code tardies versus absent students, we can actually correct that. And that number is actually going to come down just by a data correction. And there were some other comments in the public comment just about the junior, the parking lot and the update of the NEST program and so on, which we actually address in other areas of our presentation. And that's all I, that's all we have for admin reports.
The committee reports. I don't think there are any, but just in case there have been recently updated.
Curriculum's meeting tomorrow.
Okay, moving on to discussion and possible action. Fiscal year closeout, I believe, Ms. Grifani?
Yes.
Will you pull up our slide for us? Thank you so very much. So there are not, there are not a whole lot of surprises, but I do have some outstanding, I do have some things that are still outstanding from, from the prior year. So we ordered some technology equipment that has been delayed due to manufacturing delays. And that's part of our E-rate. And I am happy to say that the, that some of the equipment was delivered just yesterday to Easton. So I'm very hopeful that it will be delivered to Region 9 in the next week or so. So that's, so that is outstanding. Obviously, we will pay the invoice when the equipment actually arrives to us. So that includes some things like new access points and server equipment. I am working with our facilities and operations director to make sure that, or manager, to make sure that the, that our transportation from last year includes all of our, all of our deadhead miles. And so I don't want to close out those final transportation invoices until we have verified that we have gotten all the credits that we need to have back. So that's the second piece that's outstanding. Thirdly, we do have some facilities projects that are still ongoing, that are not all the way complete. And you'll hear more about that in a few minutes. So those are some of the facilities things that you approved for last year. But we, well, those final invoices are still outstanding. And then we still have a few legal and auditing bills that have, that have come in that need some review before we, we pay them. And so those are the, that's what's left of our encumbered funds that are outstanding.
So in the red area, columns D and E, they're the outstanding bills we thought to pay. Do you anticipate that all $178,000 will, will be needed? Or is there a possibility that any funds would, would be left over? And what would happen to those funds if they were left over?
I do not anticipate that we will use all of those funds. And any remaining funds, you decided as a whole to put those directly into healthcare. And so those, any remaining encumbered funds will, when all of the invoices have been paid, will go into that health benefits account.
So to refresh everyone's memory, in the green area there, in the planned end-of-year expenses, we, we placed $495,110 in the capital reserve fund, $100,000 into pension. We purchased a Gator for $35,354. We wanted to put money towards the equipment garage roof repair for $30,000, which was brought up this evening. There was $35 allocated towards the projector in the auditorium, and the remaining funds were to go into the health reserve account.
So that is where we are for our last year end-of-year.
Just a, because it's, it's very likely that this 1.5 that's in the health is going to go up to 1.6, 1.7 maybe, right?
Yes.
Okay. So that's the kind of the end-of-year picture. We still have a, a few outstanding items, but we hope to resolve those in the next couple of weeks.
In the next couple of weeks.
Perhaps we can send the board an email if we, if we do get.
When we receive?
Yeah, if we do kind of resolve those with an update.
I'm very excited that the E-rate technology is arriving. We, we've been wanting that to come here so that we can install it.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any questions about our end-of-year funds?
All right. Item B, start of school update.
Oh, start of school update. Okay. So let me just present this. Okay. So we've had a very successful beginning to the year. We did have quite a hot period there for a few days. But largely, our schools have opened smoothly. Students were very excited to be back. And probably after the first few days, I sent a survey out to all communities, old schools, and asked a few key questions. And this is, these are the results of the survey. Before I get to the survey, I just want to remind everyone that you should be following our Instagram page, which is ER9 District. We're a little bit over 1,950 followers. And this is a great way to stay up to date with the different activities and events that are happening in our school. And if you just wanted to see some, some pictures of what the first few days of school look like, you can, again, you can go in and see some pictures of our hockey team. These are some very good images. I wonder who took these pictures? Sarah, I actually put your, you see that there? Courtesy, yeah. So you can see here, here's our.
Nice turf.
Here is, nice turf, yes. Here is our fitness room. I've never seen it so packed. Every square inch was used. And I think the students are really enjoying being in the fitness center. They're, they're on the treadmills, which they can now face out to the hallway with windows. It's climate-controlled in there, and it's, it's been busy every afternoon. So that's a great update for the fitness center. Here's some pictures of the boys' soccer team on the new turf. What's amazing about the new turf is you can actually have three practices going on at the same time. So when I was there this afternoon, we had boys practice down, Varsity's boys practiced down one end, then you had JV in the middle, and then I did the down, down the, the far end, you had actually girls practicing, right? Going horizontally across. And I've actually seen field hockey on one side, soccer on the other. So it's getting a lot of great use. Here is some pictures of the Peter Hanson awards ceremony that Owen brought up tonight. Here are some pictures from our, about our athletics department and the Michael's Cup recipient award. You can see here. And there are just various pictures of kind of life inside the classroom. This is our STEM lab. There's actually a meeting tonight of students in the STEM lab. And just lots of really happy students involved in various activities. And by and large, everyone's really excited to be back. And if you're interested, we do have a lot of young students who are also very happy as well. Oh, here's a picture of the, the upper gym. And it's great to see students in there. They really do appreciate it. It's so bright and open. The floors, the floor looks wonderful. The walls look incredible. The new bleachers, I, we had an advisory in there the other day, the morning, and students were actually sitting on the bleachers. It was, it was really great. And there's pictures of them on the bleachers. So it's great to see everyone. So back to the presentation. I, let me see. Here we go. These were the questions I asked. How were the first three days of school for your children? Were they excellent, very good, fair, or hoping for better days ahead? And the survey, we had 691 responses in the first couple of days, which is a very good sample size. And the survey, we had 691 responses in the first couple of days, which is a very good sample size. And you can see here that 48% responded excellent, 42% said very good, 6.5% said fair, and there were a little under 2% said hoping for better days ahead.
Is this district wide?
This is district wide. So I want to talk to you about. So in addition to that question, we asked, please provide any feedback. You know, we got a lot of positive feedback. And most importantly, we said, if things aren't going smoothly, how can we help you? So for those those parents that responded hoping for better days ahead, we actually developed a spreadsheet and we put all those responses in this spreadsheet. And sometimes parents said, you know, my my child did not have a good day. They sat alone in the lunchroom. They didn't have a friend. And so whenever we saw responses like that, we shared it with the administrators. And if the parent chose to leave their name, then administrators reached out to that family and and could see how they could help, which was really nice. So some of the communication, again, this is district wide, so you can see some some pictures, some descriptive feedback in there from fifth grade and so on. But the first few days of school, very organized, well thought out, all went smooth, kids were happy. Very smooth and exciting transition back. Bus times were erratic, but understandable. Uneventful transition into high school, organized and welcoming and so on. So some of the constructive feedback was around buses and how buses were going to be late. There was communication or suggestions about homework assignments. My daughter mixes up homework instructions very easily. Google Classroom wasn't activated yet. And so we did have some technology things we were working on in the first few days in terms of Power School and lunches and so on. So we I think we've resolved most of those issues. There's some communication in there from sixth grade parents and some seventh grade families, information about after school activities and clubs. And obviously, this is very check back again, and we will. We will check back again and see how everyone's doing. But Dr. Amada, do you have any thoughts on your impressions on the first couple of weeks of school?
I'm sure I can speak for every teacher in all the schools. September's a great month, especially in the beginning of the month. After being here in the summer, preparing and all the work, it's so quiet in the summertime, just dry. So having all the kids back in the hall isn't noise and the energy. That's like the most exciting time for educators. So I think it's gone well. I want to do a little shout out to our bus drivers because, yes, the first couple of days with changes and routes and so forth. But they've been amazing, like from day one. They've been getting here on time. Yes, the high school buses pick up kids very early. That is correct. But other than that, that was mostly the only, I don't want to call them negative. But again, just a shout out with so many districts having issues filling bus drivers. We our our company's done a great job. And a few times that we had to call for little hiccups, they were right on it. So just a little shout out to our bus company. This isn't the easiest district to drive a bus. Some of our back roads are difficult for us to drive a regular car. God forbid a bus, but but a shout out to those drivers.
Questions or comments?
I do have a quick comment. I can say that having a freshman who is entering, my second child now, entering for the first time coming into high school, and there was the back to school night for parents of freshmen who have many questions and all of that, and it went smoothly. It was nice and informative and it taught me things that I didn't get to do the first time around because of the pandemic. So I know that people really appreciated being able to come in and put their, you know, fears at bay and understand what their kids are talking about when they say advisory, because they've never heard that before. All of those things that come up, you know, and it things that you forget about too. And we've got the new website, so everyone's trying to navigate that and happy for the new website. But, you know, little things like I heard somebody say, we came from a different district and our our students have no idea what how to use Google Classroom. So I was like, ah, you know, things like that that you hear and it's great feedback. So then I shared some feedback to.
Tutorial to that student the next day in one of the academic centers.
Perfect. But you know, there's things like that, I think, that are great learning opportunities on both ends, right? And it was just nice to be able to have that. And I think people were really appreciative.
A good turnout for the evening event because we had a morning event. Thank you for that little positive. But yes, we had a morning session, which was well attended for a morning session. And then we ran the one that you were in and that was every seat was taken. So thank you. I forgot about that.
Because to that, did we feel like the I guess the freshman orientation activities that the board decided to invest additionally for that? Did we find that that helped?
I think so. We we heard a lot from the teachers. They did. They looked less lost, if that makes. They didn't look as nervous. They did. They knew that they had to get to point A to point B. They knew some of that general, you know, they were here in the spring. They were here again during the summer. So I think having those two events within a few months of each other. We have one scheduled for October because we took a lot of the advice you provided us last year about I know we can't really compete with some of the private schools. We took your advice on that and we're actually inviting all schools. I forgot the day, but it's in October. We scheduled that with the middle school principals. They're going to come. So we want to present a program of studies, the registration system, how do you pick courses? How do you select courses? Concerts are going to be at the middle schools on this day, this day. So we wanted to feed that to them like super early or earlier than we normally do. Because what we heard from some of you was that some of the private schools were getting to those schools before us, which kind of alarmed us a little bit. So we're going, I forgot the day, but it's in October.
To that point, I actually was talking to somebody who's on the PTA and they said they would be willing to work with you on sort of making that event like more, you know, adding a little, you know, extras to it if you were interested, like, you know, decorations, food, whatever.
Okay.
Just a follow on on that. So going through this time, since we did provide extra funding, what things do you think worked, didn't work? Was the funding enough? Or should we expect to see more funding to put other things in that you want to try for this next year since we're going into budgets?
I mean, I'm spot on. I mean, listen, every year we learn something different. I thought having that meeting with the students and the having students visit, it was the first time we did it last year in a long time since the pandemic. And then hearing from you, hey, let's do it earlier. Okay, we'll try it. So here we are. We're going to try it. It's not really a cost thing. The buses bring the students over. They're going to be back for lunch. There's not really a cost there. I thought the dance, believe it or not, is kind of a fun event to just bring both towns together. I mean, we we preach at Barlow, you're not a Easton student, you're not a Reading student, you're a Falcon when you get here. So we started that early. I think that maybe not as academic center, but it was a nice social gathering to bring those students together. We have met last year with both memberships of the PTSA, PTO of the two schools. And they've had some ideas, inviting students and we're supporting an idea they had, which is allowing middle schools to buy a T-shirt and that can go to any home theater production, any concert, any game, barring like CIC playoffs and that. We don't control those games, but any home game. So we like that idea. We're actually looking into doing that. But I don't think any of those are going to be additional budgets. So for now, I think that that was helpful.
And how are the academic centers? I know it's early, but how is there more awareness there or what's the been the initial response? The academics, the academic centers are more students using it or there's more awareness about it?
Absolutely. Like I said earlier, our our goal from the beginning was to actually schedule certain type of students and we wanted to start with the ninth graders. We reached out early, early in the process to the middle school, to the middle schools. And they gave us a list of students that they thought could use those supports. Then was getting the students to buy into that, getting the parents to buy to that. So Scott Reimold, who's our academic centers coordinator, contacted every single one of those students and their families and actually scheduled them on their schedule. One of the issues that we had heard from the centers was getting buy in. Everybody will drop in when they have a quiz or a test. They may need a little extra help. But getting them there on a regular basis, we wanted to have that kind of consistency. So those students are actually scheduled twice in the six period rotation, six day rotation, sorry. So they're actually scheduled, it's on their schedule. So if they're not there, it's it's they're marked absent, triggers a a message home and starts the conversations. And Scott is contacting the families, letting them know, a little bit weekly update and progresses. So that was our big focus. I think it's 22 students that we got in that initial round from the middle school or up to 22. Then there were a few additional students that teachers recommended to counseling, hey, we had our first test. Oof, this student can use a little extra help and that. We we kind of met with those students, got their parents on board, added that. And then a lot of the teachers just promoting because the ILs, our instructional leaders, are in every one of those centers. So we have them scheduled. That's one of their duties. So on top of the teachers that run the centers, we have different instructional leaders that are going in there. So they're bringing in students that they might have met in their classrooms sometimes during lunch, as Dr. Percy Newell said earlier. They're now going there. So they're seeing different types of students in the upper grades. So I I'll get data for the for the for one of our future meetings. But just by walking by, it was important to have them like right there. Anytime we walk by, there's customers in there. So it's it's good to see that.
How is it being? I know when we were discussing it last year, it was it's meant to be a resource for the entire school and for every student here. And how is it being communicated to the broad, the the broad population, both students, but also their families, so that everybody's aware of this resource and how it works and how they can schedule regardless of whether they've been tapped for by their teacher or by
Sure, sure.
special services?
As I said, our priority was in the beginning of the year, getting those ninth graders involved, engaged in those centers. Messages have gone out to the to the parents. In every advisory, we've advertised that the centers are open for all students. Teachers in their homerooms, teachers at their classes are promoting the centers. What's nice is again, the instructional leaders. So you have a group of now a dozen teachers that are also somehow involved in those centers. They're advertising to their students. Could we do a better job maybe with the families? I don't think we've done a lot of advertising to the families, but certainly to the students of all grades, we've been doing that. We have the open house on Thursday. We the centers will be open. Parents will be able to get kind of a quick little look in there. But we can certainly work on even better communication, maybe a monthly update when we send stuff home through counseling. Yeah, we could do that with the parents. But for students, we've been doing a lot of advertising.
Are the 20 students that were initially sort of funneled in there, were they special ed students necessarily? Or just students who needed extra help?
Students that need help, they're not what you mentioned. And I wouldn't get into who is, who isn't.
No, no, I'm just I'm just asking because I'm just wondering if it was another layer of.
Nope, this is not that those centers are not servicing. They could, but that's not that wasn't the goal for those students that we identified in the beginning of the year.
Just one other question too on Bridges program and how that started out for the year. And maybe it's a little early for a report on that that we can get later, but any comment on that and and how that started out?
We have a new teacher that took over that program. So Nora Curley, who came from Oxford, is doing a great job there. One of the asks when myself, Nicole and Catherine met with membership of that department was that they needed and because that program has gotten large, much larger than it's been, that they wanted a separate space because they only had one room. So it was very challenging when the teacher of record was trying to teach a certain subject and there might be a student that's dysregulated or needed some help from a social worker, from a psych. So so there was a lot going on in that one room. And although they they tried to have dividers, it wasn't working. So we identified a classroom. So now there's two rooms for Bridge. So one is strictly for the academic piece. And the other one is for students that are, again, just facing whatever might be the problem that day. And they're 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 working separately. So that has seemed to been to be really working well, better than it ever has. So that's a quick update, but I can get you more information for next meeting on Bridge.
That'd be great. And I know we've had good reports in the past on all the programs there in the the special ed side. And number of students with and the different plans and kind of how people are coming up from the K through eight side. So again, Catherine, welcome, but would probably be good to see some of those reports at future, just to see since there's been such a, you know, turnover in that department. We've got a lot of great new leaders in there to to just understand how things are are going there. We've got a lot more people, as you were saying, right, in in using the program. So it'd be good to see how things are.
Is there anything in particular that you would find interesting to know?
I I think like if we can go back through some of the past reports that we've had, there have just been some good numbers on students in the different types of programs, how many participants in the bridges and out placements and those kinds of things. So some of those numbers.
From the feeder districts, I think.
Yeah.
And we we usually have a report where we just track entry and into the either the various programs, right, whether it's bed or IEPs or 504s. And so we do have kind of quantitative information. And I think I'd be curious, I mean, I think I think a few of us, myself included, have probably been individually proponents of a K through 12 speds. I'd love to be able to understand what the what the feeder system is to Stephanie's point, right? How that's looking like and and how we can track progress of a child if they start in kindergarten and then they end up through 12th grade. Because I think that's great.
And just my thoughts on that. I know you want quantitative information on programs, the percent of students with IEPs and and all of the all of the data that you've received in the past. And I think that information is important. I'd like to move us towards here is our strategic plan for special education. Here are our four broad focus areas. And underneath those four broad areas are 20 or 30 action steps. And so I'd like to start providing you with more information reports based on those priorities. Because that will that will kind of focus toward a little bit in the future as to what we need, what we need to accomplish. And so maybe we can do a combination of the quantitative data, but also focus more on the specially strategic plan and how we're implementing various aspects of that plan.
Okay.
Yeah, great.
Could someone speak briefly on the new ESL teacher?
So it's a portion of one of our Spanish teachers FTE. A portion of his role will focus on our multilingual learners. And I we are really just starting up. So we're at the point of the year where we review any new registrations to identify students whose parents or guardians have answered the the home language survey in a way that requires us to identify if the student might need some English language support. And then based on that information and the roster of students who might continue to need support in this building, then we will be working with the teacher so that he can determine the best method of support, which at the high school level tends to be more push in support as opposed to pull out, but helping the student to understand how to how to function in in a classroom where the primary language is, of course, English. The level of support is very different depending on the level of English proficiency. So for a student who's a newcomer, sometimes we might begin even with some translation services. So we want the student to feel connected. The neat thing about this building is that we have a large enough student body and a really actively involved student body so that kids connect with one another. So if we receive a family that moves just moved in from another country, it doesn't take long before the students have said, hey, I know someone who speaks that language and and they also form a support. But it is a portion of one of our teachers FTE and I want to say it's point two, but I.
Point two is Franco Milton that that's doing that role. It's only a point two. And can I just also mention to your point, Dr. Percy? Counseling does a really good job of making sure we do get a student from said country. They find students in our student body and create a very, very like specific schedule that has certain students reflective in that schedule. So to your point, those students are getting like day to day conversational assistance, which is sometimes the best of that they need.
Merch.
Exactly. So so they're speaking during lunch, they're speaking with class.
Yes.
It's 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 and it's almost like I look at it, I was almost like, our kid's here, like we'll jump. Oh, I'll get her to the next class or I'll get him to the next class. So that's that's really special to see here. We have a a couple of families that have moved from Brazil. We still have a few families from the Ukraine. That seems to be the biggest representation in that in that student body that's looking for needs some help with the English immersion.
Sometimes it has to do with with acclimating the student in the English language. And sometimes it's understanding if they moved, especially from another country, how the curriculum in another place might be very different and the student might be more advanced in one area than another. And so the support really needs to be sort of personalized in a way. So whether it's providing advanced information about academic vocabulary that they're going to be exposed to in a social studies class, or whether it might be understanding, you understand the mathematics when it's a numerical representation, but let's help you walk through. but let's help you walk through a different way that we instruct. Now, happy to have them on board. And because there's also a K eight M L L teacher, we have a meeting planned for the two of them to be able to get together with a number of us to really talk about pre-K through 12, how we're supporting students.
Questions?
So just to close out this topic, which started about kind of the opening of school update, we, we just want to extend our thanks and gratitude to our 12-month employees. We talked a little bit about this at Convocation where a school year doesn't start on the first day of school. It really starts really on the last day of school and in preparation for the first day of school. So thank you to our custodians, our secretaries, all of our 12-month employees, to our team at Central Office, who you see here tonight. Sarah, Stephanie, Mike, Catherine, who joined us at the end of July, Jeff Bradbury, who is our technology director. Special thanks to Vicky, who hired a lot of staff. So we literally built walls this summer in order to prepare. And our final gratitude goes to our teachers at Joe Barlow because we had an excellent start of the school year. Over 90% of parents said that it was either excellent or very good. And they were so welcoming and happy and engaged and really welcomed the students back, a lot of them freshmen. And just imagine that nervous energy when students come in and our teachers were really fantastic. There were some high heat days. Mr. D'Agostino is going to talk a little bit about the chiller and where we are with that and that investigation. But there were some days that were quite tropical. And the teachers here were so professional and they just have a can-do attitude and we really appreciate it. So it was a great start to the school year.
I would just like to thank you for an excellent convocation. It was, it was really a great start to the year. You could feel it was positive, it was energetic. It was, I thought the content that you covered was really actionable and intentional. And I think it was a pep rally, but it was also meaty. And I thought it was very well done. So thank you and your team who put it together. It was, you kicked off the year for everybody who you just thanked, I think, in a really meaningful way and set the tone for a great year.
Thank you.
And now I have two more books to read.
Yes.
Oh, yes. We can get you a copy if you'd like one.
Oh, I already stored it.
Oh, great.
I have one quick question. Sorry to go backwards a little bit, but it was regarding the families where English is the second language and the back-to-school nights. Do we provide supports for them on those nights? So that way the parents aren't walking in and then they can't communicate with anyone? Or do we have people on site?
So depending on the parent's understanding of the English language, a lot of, there's a lot of outreach before we get to those evenings to really determine the way the parent would feel most comfortable being supported and we take their lead. But between counseling and our teacher who's now in this role, I'm confident that there's an outreach. And in this building, there are very few, right? So we're really talking about a few families.
Okay. Thank you. That was it.
Okay, great.
I will add, Convocation was excellent. I've attended a lot of what I'll call more private sector leadership conferences. And this was very, very comparable to that, very motivating. And to Kathy's point, it was clear what the objectives were. And, you know, as a student, I'm a lifelong student, I learned from you as a teacher. So it was excellent. And I would hope that, that, that positive energy would be, would infect a lot of our staff in a good way, right? And then we'll see more leadership within the buildings. But I thought it was very inspirational and love the, love the cup, the school cup. That was really good. For Harry Potter fans, it was, it was very entertaining. So. Okay, moving on, item number C, agenda number C. Unfortunately, we'll have to move that to the next meeting. We'll have to table that. The contract is still in process and will be ratified by the union and we'll bring it to the board accordingly. Moving on to item D, permitting for Nest project and update. So I'll provide an update and then turn it over to Gwen to talk about the kind of permitting, the private update from that perspective. And just so the board is aware, Gwen and I did attend the Board of Selectmen, the Reading Board of Selectmen meeting last night as individuals, not representing the board. But we did...
We said that several times.
We said that several times. And we did provide individually, individual updates to the selectmen in terms of where we are with respect to the project, right? Recapped the $4.5 million that was approved by the taxpayers, the bond issuance, that the fields were done. And we did share that the fields do look fantastic. I took a walk this weekend, they were excellent. And it was nice, I think someone said it, to see multiple teams playing multiple times, have that opportunity. We had never had that in, I think, ever. So it was really, really good to see. So we shared that feedback with the Board of Selectmen as well as the cost that after the referendum, after the bond approval and the proceeds, after the town of Reading approved the matching 250K grant from ARPA, contingent on a fundraising group providing the similar amount. So after all those amounts were approved by the respective taxpayers and voters respectively, we learned of additional costs, again, this is just recapping for the public, additional costs that are required in terms of the parking lot that was part of the original scope. This is the parking lot of the stadium. Additional drainage that was required in the field. So that was additional cost that, again, was not foreseen until we had all the approved funds from the respective voters and taxpayers. And the additional costs, which Gwen will get into, potential additional costs, which Gwen described early on relate to requirements by the Department of Environmental Protection from the state. So we did recap that as part of the Board of Selectmen meeting last night. And they did point out that, that as approved by the town of Reading, that the 250K, what I'll call matching funds provided by the ARPA funds from Reading, that would have expired on October 20th, 2023, which is not, which is, you know, under, a little over a month from now. So the Board of Selectmen did agree to extend that, that end date to, through November. We did, the topic of removing the contingency, if you will, was discussed but tabled. And we did provide, again, we did receive that extension for a month. The conditions still apply as originally voted on, but that's kind of where we are. And then I think really wanted to share this with the board as that might guide what we do once we provide the RFP for the building and then decide accordingly. So I'll stop there. There are any questions on that? Or if none, you know, Gwen, if you could provide an update and then we can discuss.
Sure. Can I just ask you to repeat, what's the date they extended the deadline through November what?
So it's a month. So I mean, if I just read 30 days from the 20th, it would be, you know, November 19th.
They didn't actually specify exactly what the new date was. They just said they were extending it for a month.
And then just for disclosure and transparency, the town did indicate they reviewed all the specific motions that were made and approved in public meetings as documented and approved in the public meetings. So they did indicate that there is flexibility in the way, in terms of the time that was provided to be able to use those funds, right? So just to reiterate, the funds per ARPA guidelines must be encumbered or committed to in 2024, but it can be spent, it can wait until 2026 to actually be spent. So those are the requirements with respect to the ARPA funds. And then again, as we said, there was some discussion about extending that date from October. We got through November. We could go back and request whether or not the selectmen will consider extending further.
Yeah, I think they were waiting to see, as we all are, what happens in the next month or two. All right, permitting. So I think everyone is aware that we are a little bit hung up about what to do with the sewage from the proposed bathroom building. We have had a response from D E P over the summer. And I was actually, through an acquaintance of mine, had an informal conversation with an official at D E P who has advised that we, or just in discussion, suggested that we should perhaps explain why the options that D E P would like us to consider are not appropriate for this particular site and this particular project. So I wanted to review the options with the board and then see if we wanted to authorize me or somebody to have more formal conversations, if the board would like me to continue having an informal conversation, and what everybody thought about the different options. So I'll just start and I will, of course, ask Sarah and Mike to jump in as needed. So the first option, and I'm just gonna, I'm gonna put out there some sort of my response, my initial response to these, and then we can discuss as a board. The first option is to continue the use of the existing portlets. My, my two main objections to that would be that it doesn't permit hand washing and it also is not ADA compliant. The second would be to replace or augment the existing portlets with composting toilets, which they feel can also include ADA compliant facilities. This also doesn't really permit hand washing. I guess hand washing stations are an option, but I'm not really sure how that holds up during freezing weather. And this is a year-round facility that we are wanting to build. Their third option is to connect to the existing subsurface sewage disposal system at Barlow. The issue with that is that would require pumping the sewage approximately half mile up the hill, which would be extremely environmentally disruptive, in my opinion, as a layperson. Could also potentially require us to blast through some rocks to get up there. And I think there's probably also a potential for a failure that would be rather environmentally disastrous. And the last suggestion that they had would be to install a permanent subsurface sewage disposal system at the stadium to serve the restrooms. I feel like that would also be extremely environmentally disruptive and substantially more capacity than required to support two bathrooms. So it is our desire to install a wastewater holding tank that would be pumped by a obviously licensed septic tank person who comes and pumps out the stuff and brings it either up the hill to our existing plant or to a place that you take that stuff. And we would pay them to do that and monitor it. And it seems to me like the best way to go. The bind is that, according to the regulations, D E P cannot issue, under our circumstances, a permit for a wastewater holding tank in this situation. So we, perhaps there can be a discussion between our town health department and D E P to figure out how a permit could be issued. I don't, I really truly think that the board is trying to do this in the most environmentally friendly way. And so that's, that's where we're at. Sarah, Mike, have I missed things?
I thought that was perfect. That covers all of it.
All right. So I guess, you know, the question I have for the board is where, would the board like me to make a formal, on behalf of the board, contact with D E P? Would the board like me to continue having informal conversations? Would the board like me to just rent us some new port jobs? So.
Could you repeat what you said in number four? Install permanent subsurface?
It would be building another sewage treatment plant like the one we have up here at the building, which would be complete overkill for, and again, as a layperson, I think complete overkill for two bathrooms that are not going to be used 24/7. It's not like it's a train station.
Can you explain a little bit more about the recommended solution? The wastewater holding tank, is it above ground, underground? And why is there, what's the pushback about a permit? Why do they not like that idea?
I don't think, from the discussion that I had, there's no sort of, there's no substantive objection. It's literally the way the statute is written.
Okay.
That it doesn't, they don't, it's not within their permitting authority in our circumstance. As I understand it, if we had, for instance, already pumped the septic up the hill, tried to pump the septic up the hill and that had failed, then maybe we would be, they would be able to issue us this permit, which seems to me is like one of the reasons that people hate government, you know? Like, you have to have a catastrophic failure before you can...
Wait till it fails and then do it right.
Right. And I, that's, that's my impression from the conversation that I had with this person.
So, and is the holding tank, is it an above ground, below ground? How does it, what is it?
Probably like a regular septic tank, right?
Is it? I'm gonna ask Mike to jump in here now.
Yeah. So it's, it would be below ground, it would be subsurface. And again, it would be virtually like a, like a septic tank. It would be buried in the ground. Again, the only difference would be rather than it going through a whole leaching process where, you know, it goes, you know, out through the soil, it would be pumped very much, it's identical to your porta potties that are down there now. It's contained and they're pumped out and the waste is taken to waste disposal plant, like in Danbury or somewhere and disposed of. So it's, yeah, it's something that would be very environmentally friendly. Obviously, nothing's going into the ground. And I guess just to dovetail on what Gwen was mentioning is that typically the state doesn't like to come in and say, everyone can put a tank, a holding tank and, you know, pump your waste out and, you know, have it transported somewhere else. They like for it to be leached into the ground, you know, through an approved septic system or a sewage disposal, you know, a, you know, a subsurface sewage treatment plant. What they will allow is if you have a septic system or you have some sort of a system and it has a colossal failure, they will allow you then to put in a tank and you can have the tank. But it's not something that is within their authority to grant approval as your first course of action. It's more of a remediation method in their eyes. And I think what Gwen explained very well is that the town can actually issue you a permit for the sewage disposal, for the sewage holding tank. But the town works under the umbrella of D E P. So D E P is the higher authority than the town. So I believe what Gwen was, you know, aptly detailing is that D E P would have to step aside to allow your local building official to issue the permit for your holding tank. D E P doesn't have the authority to issue the permit for your holding tank. So that's where there's kind of that, you know, collision of minds there is that one entity really needs to step aside and let the other issue the permit, which is a little atypical.
Two questions with that, Mike. The holding tank, I assume it's just a cement holding tank, something that nothing is going to, we're not gonna smell anything coming out of it. It would be something that would be well-contained, tight. And, you know, just like when we get our tanks pumped out at home, you're gonna smell when the truck comes and pumps the sewage out of the tank. But that's a temporary thing. And what about the difficulty of actually digging into the ground to get that tank?
To put the tank in initially?
Yeah.
Yeah, so again, it's just a hole with your tank in it and it's connected to your bathroom, you know, your waste through your bathrooms. And typically, they're not concrete. They're like really thick plastic, like really, like a resin. Plastic's bad because I don't think it's gonna crack, but it's, it's like a strong fiberglass resin material. Again, made for underground and extremely durable.
How often is it anticipated it would have to be pumped out?
So that would all depend on the size of your tank, obviously, just like everything else. If you put a really big tank, you... If you put a really big tank, you could pump it less frequently. But obviously, you would size it appropriately so that you're not pumping it every week, you know? It'd be something that would be periodically pumped and you would probably pump it after a, a really big event, you know, if, if you were, you know, getting close to your, your regularly scheduled pumping anyway. But I think as Gwen mentioned, the, the idea would be to have the same professional licensed company that deals with our sewage treatment plant on a daily basis. There's, there's a professional who's down there every day of the week that reviews our sewage treatment plant and he puts in, I know you remember the discussion about the sugar during budget time, which again is, is a treatment that helps keep the nitrates down on a sewage treatment plant. But there's someone there that monitors that, that regulates that, that, you know, kind of keeps track of all of that. And so it seems like it would make sense to designate that company to be responsible for the timing of the pumping. And those tanks, those holding tanks also, they have alarms on them, you know, they're, they're very advanced. So you would know when it was time to pump and, and you could put it on a regular schedule.
How would we know where is the most appropriate location for that?
For the tank? In close proximity to where your bathrooms are and in an area, obviously, where there's no other utilities there. But, and, you know, a, a spot that would do the least amount of, you know, intrusion and damage, you know, when you placed it. But it, it seems like there's enough spots down there that would be close to it, probably directly behind it towards the side where the, where the baseball fields are going that way would probably be the best location.
And I ask because people have, now that people have been down there and on the fields and have been back and forth and back and forth, especially from the far field now, walking all the way to the porta potties, people have asked if there's the opportunity for us to consider moving the building that we're talking about, that we don't have a design for just yet, in between the two fields? And if we have enough wiggle room to decide that now because nothing is set in stone just yet?
So you could certainly opt to put the building in a different location. There's pros and cons with, you know, all of that with moving it. The other question would be if there was an opportunity for you to, to build on to the existing maintenance garage to utilize that area, your construction cost would be less than building a new, bigger freestanding building further down and putting it, you know, in between the two fields. The other drawback is you're gonna put it next to your home bleachers, you know, there's, there's lots of things to think about. It's not out of the question. It's something, I guess, that your committees could, could look at. But yeah, it's, so I guess the question is you could put, the answer is you could put it wherever you really wanted to, as long as you had the infrastructure for it.
What's the approximate cost of putting another treatment plant down there? I'm just thinking, you know, if the holding tank is Plan A, what's Plan B? I mean, obviously, we can fall back to what we're doing today with the portalets so that it can always be Plan B or Plan C. But, you know, is, I'm not, have no idea how much that plant would cost and if, if we're doing a holding tank plus, you know, payments to pump it on a regular basis, are we better off over the long term, you know, putting a treatment plant where our operational costs will be lower over the longer term?
Yeah. So obviously, I'm, I'm not a sewage treatment plant design professional, but I would, I would safely say that the sewage treatment plant would cost you more than what you're talking about for your building.
When you say that the original allocation of the 4.5 was 1.5 for the building, so is that, okay. So you're saying would exceed that? Potentially, without being a professional sewage-
That would be, yeah. My hypothesis, again, I'm not a professional, but yeah.
Yeah. How realistic is it that the DEP will step aside and let Reading issue a permit? Is that, is that a realistic hope?
I think it's worth asking. You know, I, I can't, I can't predict. I had a, I had a conversation that was not the least bit, I didn't feel like I was getting pushback and I, you know, it was, it was a good back and forth and sort of an explanation of what, you know, what their parameters were and like that. So I, I personally think it's worth pursuing. I think it's worth a shot. I wouldn't bet my house on it, but I think-
Do you feel like you have the information you need to make the case for it? It sounds like they asked, like, to, to-
Yeah, I mean, I would-
This is why these options that you've laid out don't work and here's, do you feel like you have what you need to make that case?
Well, if, if the board did want me to go, go forward with it, because I haven't been able to, you know, to have a formal communication and to send a, we would request that type of communication, then I would, I would ask for authorization to do that after having additional consultation with Sarah and Mike and making sure that we're putting the best argument forward to plead our case. Because I tru, I mean, like I said before, I truly think we're trying to do the best thing, you know, environmentally here.
What do you think the timing would be from when you make a formal, have a formal discussion with the DEP to when you might get an answer, yes or no?
I, I've not done this before, but I would imagine it's, I mean, there are only a few people up there at the top, so I think they're either gonna be sympathetic or not sympathetic. And I would, I don't know, I would imagine it would be pretty quickly that they're gonna, they're gonna either laugh in our face or they're gonna figure out a way that it could work. That's my, my gut reaction, my gut instinct, but I don't know.
To that, with the board, would somebody willing to make a motion to authorize Gwen Denny to discuss with-
I'll make a motion. Second.
On the board's behalf?
On the board's behalf.
Communicate on the board's behalf, is that what we say?
So it's Mary Lee Caffey. Any further discussion or amendment? All in favor? So I guess one thing, just going back to the update, the, the one thing, I don't know, Mike, if you know this, the different options, right? So we talked about the potential cost for the subsurface. But what about the pumping up, is that, are those, is that other option number three more expensive than the subsurface disposal system?
No.
And that's around, I mean, again, not relying on your non-expert opinion on the sewage.
I think the other issue with that, I'm, I'm jumping in and you're-
Yep.
Is it's gonna depend on how much rock you run into and stuff like that that won't be known and, and would have to sort of trace the path, I would imagine.
It's the unknown determining the path. It's, yeah, it's probably, it, it could potentially be a third the cost of your building.
How do we get estimates for that? Is that part of our RFP or is that something we would have to price down? Because I think even for the holding tank, right, we need to get that price. So i, is there a way we can get estimates so we'll, you know, have somebody that officially does that for their work to give us a price number?
Yeah, we can certainly, obviously, that would be part of your, your RFP if that's, you know, the path, you know, the, the course that we, we followed, you know? Even then, I would say that your RFP would need to be written in such a way because, again, the unknowns, you know? If, if, if a vent, you know, a contractor gives you a price, there's, there's always gonna be extra if they were to hit, you know, rock or granite or whatever, you know, those are, those are the parts that you would have to build into your RFP. And so it's a little bit of an unknown. I know Todd, you wanna definite and, you know, you could, you could probably get a pretty close number, again.
We'll always put contingency into our-
You, you would definitely need contingency, yes.
Something like that. But I, I guess, I mean, it seems like there's such a diversity of pricing options from portalets all the way to treatment plant to holding tank, that it would be good to understand those and, and maybe, you know, if the DEP approves one of them, then we only need to price one option. If we don't get clear guidance, we may have to price all the options if it takes them longer than a, you know, a couple of weeks to make a decision.
We could start taking a look at what those different options would be, like it does.
Do we think it's better to kind of build into the RFP, you know, anything other than the, the portalets? I'm assuming the, or make it a presumption that the board would want something more than the, what it'd be existing, what we have existing and the composting toilet. So narrowing it down to the three options, would it make sense to include that in the RFP? That way, we have a range of potential possibilities and then can, you know, just thinking about the timeline, you know, we only have a month, right? And we could go back to the board's selectment and say, can you extend it more? But I, but I'm hoping to get momentum around getting an RFP, at least responses to it. So if we know the range is 1.5 to whatever, you know, or the low end is less than that, it's 500K, at least we can go, maybe perhaps get people to fund, you know, to donate more so we can get the matching grants or anything that, where we could have a tangible design that's been approved through our process to kind of get people excited about it. And if not, we've got the lowest cost option and we can move forward with that.
Is it possible to do an RFP for the building that leaves off what happens to the septic after it leaves the building and make that into a separate one? A separate RFP for, or is it all tied, is it after we tie together?
Can I jump in?
Yeah.
I agree with everything you just said. I was, with, with one small distinction. I was at two high schools over the past, over the weekend at field hockey tournaments. Both high schools quite close to us. And I, first of all, was watching field hockey on a grass field and a turf field and all the student athletes were commenting how much better it was on the, on the turf field. So I'm so pleased that we have that field down there now and, and being at games tonight, it's so great to see everyone happy with that outcome. But both of these high schools had team rooms and toileting facilities. And I actually went in and took a lot of pictures and said, wow, we should, and I'm just like, I, I just don't think it's acceptable.
You don't know how many away team bathrooms I've looked at longingly, Jason, over the last 10 years.
I just, I don't think it's acceptable for us to even contemplate a porta potty or a porta potty with some type of composting arrangement. If other towns around us can, can do, have team rooms and bathrooms, we should too. We just have to, we, we just gotta follow up with DEP, follow up with the town of Reading, see if whether DEP can grant the town of Reading to step aside so we can explore that option, craft the RFP in such a way that we can look at a menu of, of options between pumping to the sewage, the sewage plant or the holding tank and so on. We have to contemplate using the existing building that's there right now because I think we need to save as much money as possible on building a foundation and the existing footprint. We just put in a new parking lot there, so I don't know where that would go anyway. I mean, it's a great idea. We need to make some executive decisions off the top so that when we do the RFP, we're looking at, you know, you know, look at team rooms and bathrooms that are code compliant that go in this location and we have to, we have, we gotta leave off those options. I'm just, I strongly-
I agree, I would agree.
I know, you're just, I don't think we even put that in as a- Because again, other school, we've all been to these other facilities around us and our student athletes deserve this and our community members deserve it. I was talking to an Eastern parent tonight, his name was Keith, I'm not gonna say his last name. He was so excited to see his, his daughter play on the new turf field and he was asking about the lights and the, and the berm and where the, the, the bleachers are gonna go and so on. And he's like, we're ready. We're, we're just waiting on the design. As soon as you get the design, I know I can get my, my family and my friends around it. And he had also younger students who were in the pipeline in football and field hockey. And they're excited about those students using the facilities now as well, not just Barlow students. There's so much excitement around the project and we just have to, you know, get the RFP developed and, and move forward.
And I think it's important to not, in all of this regulatory stuff, not to lose sight of the amazing work that got that field in, that was proposed this winter, spring referendum happened in May and the, the field was ready for the beginning of school. And that, I, I, that never happens. And so I'm, I think we did, we did that good. Well, so, yeah.
So how do we advance the RFP? So Gwen can now go talk to the DEP and start looking through those options? How do we move forward on the RFP?
So, well, it's DeGustino, are we, would you like to craft it together? I know, again, so we can, we can craft an RFP. It's, it's gonna take a week or so for me to craft an RFP.
I'm not expecting it tomorrow, but I'd like to get it started if you need input from the board on things to put in it or to review it before it goes out.
Yeah, we, we can do all that. I guess what I would, what I'd point out is that if I craft the RFP in a week and we send it out and then we give, which would be like the minimal and probably wouldn't get a lot of responses for it, two weeks to answer the RFP, by the time we award it, like, it's not gonna happen in a month.
What's not gonna happen, sorry?
A price.
Well, I think, I would say that-
You know what I mean? I mean, we could-
We haven't crafted the RFP so far because we're still going back and forth between DEP and, and the town and, and so on. And so we, we, we did wanna kind of get some, try to read the tea leaves a little bit because that does influence the way we write the RFP. I think we can start the RFP as soon as possible and leave that section of the RFP open until we get maybe an answer, which way we're gonna lean.
Yeah, but even, and I, I would be okay with that because even if we don't have a final price, if it's a week or two to write the RFP, two to three weeks to get a response back in, you know, five weeks or so, at least we'll have opening bids from the vendors to know kind of what ballpark we're in. And then we can make some decisions based on what, what those bids are and what we need to, you know, compromise on or can add on or make adjustments to. Because I, we're just working with a lot of numbers that, you know, again, we don't have any tangible, you know, estimates behind those to make decisions on. I, I don't think any of us are expecting the building's gonna be built before, you know, in the next month or two.
No, I, I guess, no.
But we need to get the process going, I guess, so we can-
I guess maybe I was unclear. I thought you were looking to have a, a number in a month, you know, to be able to go back to selectmen. And what I was trying to say is that that's probably gonna be really wishful thinking. We could, we certainly can get it up and running, we can get, you know, you can get your, your RFP out, you can get your design firm selected, you can, you know, start to go, we can, we can do all that. I, I just wanted to make it clear that it's, it's probably gonna be really difficult to get that within a month, to get a pricing.
Do we think we can get something by November? So November, because I think it's, so we're okay for October. So the month extension goes into the selectmen's meeting in November, which is around Thanksgiving. So I don't know, to Todd's point, right? I mean, I know it's tight, Mike, I'm not, but there, there might be some wiggle room and if anything, I could go back in October and say, hey, this has been, this is out there, here's a timeline, here's the option. So at least, you know, me, Gwen or whoever could join.
If we were able to demonstrate that we are making steps and making progress, we would have a fair shot at getting another extension.
Right. And so then that's fine, but then, again, just circling back, if we're changing location, if we're doing things, you know, if we're changing that scope, then obviously I would need to know that before I write the, the RFP, so. I would need to know that before I write the, the RFP, so.
Are you talking about the scope of like the location of where the building is?
Yeah, building location.
I mean, I just wanted to bring it up for conversation. I know there is that white building there, but I totally hear you about the foundation. I do.
Yeah, I know.
But if we were looking at, here's, you know, option A, under budget. Here's option B, on budget. Here's option C, if we're reaching high.
Yeah.
What could we get? And what, what would happen if we use that white building, move all that stuff out of it and put it in the old building? You know, like, I feel like maybe there could be wiggle room, maybe not. Maybe I'm completely off base, but I just wanted to bring it up because people definitely mentioned it to me.
I know.
Yeah.
I think for sure we need bathrooms. Like, that is non-negotiable for me. Junior lot, we have already talked about last time, scoping it out. So that's, that, that can come off the table for, for me personally. We definitely need bathrooms. We definitely need team rooms, a minimum. So I'll, I'll just take that and I'll be happy with that personally. But I'm only one person, so that helps, Mike. So.
Okay.
Anybody else has any different opinion about the bathrooms? I think we're all aligned on the bathrooms.
I think you agree.
First and foremost, we need those bathrooms, yeah.
Kids deserve it. The teams, you know, the teams deserve it.
What I, what I have to think about, right, is you authorized us to do an RFP for design services. That RFP is gonna include an architect firm perhaps, or a construction firm to come in to make a design and to articulate what we think that particular design with these options is going to entail and potentially what the cost is. So that's, that's part A. You, once you get that design, we're gonna get a lot of momentum. And I'll be excited that, you know, probably we'll have conversations with donors and Eastern and Reading. And, and, and I think things will really kick off then. And we'll, we'll start having conversations about what the design looks like. At that point, we still may have to have an actual construction firm bid on the project. So there could be either another process that you have to go through as well. Just because the design company says, we think it's gonna cost $1.5 million, that's just the design. Then you need to have another company actually just commit to building it. And they're going to come up with their own estimates about what they think it's gonna cost as well. And so that's why Mike is cautious about having a number in approximately a month's time, because this is almost a two-step process, not a one-step process. And getting back to my, my example over the weekend, let me see if I can bring this back up. Here is these, this incredible facility that I, that I saw. This is the outside entrance to the bathroom. And this is the inside entrance. You can see a bathroom, a urinal, some sinks. And no one else was in there when I took the pictures. But it was, you know, and, and it was interesting, because it wasn't in the perfect spot, because there were so many fields. There's the baseball field all the way over there. There's a tennis courts here. And, and it was generally in the middle. But I was thinking about that too. There's actually a path that led all the way over to kind of where these other fields were located as well. And it's also kind of in relationship to where the parking is.
That's true, Jay. And if you think about it in relation to baseball and softball, then it really is centrally located.
Right. So it had, it had fire protection. There's some heat. There was some heat in there. You can see kind of the, aren't you excited by this?
I got excited. I saw the bathrooms. I'm, that's it.
There's some hand dryers, some sinks in there. It was so clean. I was very excited. There's a picture of me taking a picture. Okay.
Don't put that on the social media.
No, I won't put that on the social media. But it was so.
Dr. McKinnon tours local bathrooms.
I know, I know.
We're glad that you don't have the women's bathroom pictures there.
That's right. I did not go into that. I did not.
Okay, so I, I think, I mean, I don't know if there's any additional motions that are needed. I mean, the, the motion that we passed last time, you know, really authorized, you know, the administration to go out with an RFP. So I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Jason and Sarah, Mike, I think you guys have enough input to be able to move forward.
Yes.
Can we, can we start the RFP process and then give us a timeline back on?
Do that.
Yeah, when we, we think we'll get responses and all that.
Okay.
And if, and if you feel a facilities committee is needed, you know, we could definitely call a special one, you know, prior to our next board meeting.
If I make any headway, I'll be calling one immediately. Calling everybody at home in the middle of the night, whatever it takes.
To the extent the board members, again, I'm not necessarily acting on our behalf, but I'm happy to make individual public comment at the next selectmen meeting. So if there's anything that, that, you know, besides, just let me know. Okay, so moving on to agenda item E, consideration for approval of invoices. We have two, we just thought it would be just in the interest of time. We didn't have a facilities meeting, so we felt we just disposed of it in the board meetings. So hopefully that worked out okay this time around. But there are two invoices for approval. Sarah, Mike, I don't know if you guys want to just provide an overview? Might ask for a motion.
I'd be happy to go through it. So this one in front of you for Millennium Construction, Millennium Builders, sorry, I messed that up. But that's for the upper gym project. As Dr. McKinnon mentioned, there's, there's now rooftop cooling units supplying cooling to the upper gym and the fitness center. I was in the school on Saturday morning and the cheerleaders were very appreciative to be practicing in the cool conditions in the gym. And as Dr. McKinnon noted, the fitness center seems to have an uptick of attendance and participation in there as well. So the cooling is working really well. So this invoice is again, another progress payment. You can see that it's for 143, 199.59, leaving a balance on the total project of 57,759. The scope that's still unfinished includes netting on the upper gym windows. That's gonna provide protection for when we put the batting net up for baseball season. And also a revision to the, we had originally scoped wrestling mat holder for the wrestling mats that we currently have, the big older ones, to get them off the floor and mount them to the wall. We did realize that new mats were ordered and the holder that we originally had scoped would not work with the new mats, because the new mats are, are smaller and more lightweight. But there's, there's an opportunity for us to create even a better option, the different type of rack that would allow for them to be transported, because oftentimes our wrestling team practices in the cafeteria and when there's a, another event in there. So we're just, right now, in the process of switching the permanently affixed heavy-duty wrestling mat holder to the more flexible, mobile units. And we're, we're doing that. And other than that, everything else is in, as far as all of our athletic equipment, the floor is finished. So I think the $57,000 balance is more than adequate to hold the contractor.
So were those two items originally included in the?
Yes.
Budget? And so there's just gonna be a price, so I guess where I'm going with my question, if those are originally in, and there's just gonna be a price adjustment based on whatever changes. So they're included in the 57 or they're included in something already? So the 57 is still in reserve? So when we do these last two items?
They would be included in the 57, yes.
So we'll dip into the 57. And we think for those two items, they'll be underneath the 57, so that we will be.
Yeah, we're confident that it will not exceed. Again, we've done this through the, the EZIQC program, so we have a fixed price. So we have not authorized any change, any increase in price. So if, if anything, it will be a little less, but we won't know that until we spec out those additional mats.
So you'll come to us if there, the spec changes is.
Without a doubt.
Be more than what we originally budgeted because of the equipment changes.
Yes.
Are the wrestling mats on a cart? Is that what you're proposing? You said a portable?
Not a cart. On, they're mobile, so they, they, they do a wheel, but it's.
The mats themselves?
No, the, the, the holder wheels. The, the mats just lie flat on the floor. So, but they go, they go on a holder that will wheel.
Are there any final inspections required for this project from the town?
So we've already had inspections from the town all the way through this. They did a preliminary electrical inspection before the units were put in. So yes, there is one more, you know, a CO at, at the end. But we don't anticipate that there's gonna be any issues with that. We've been following the, the inspection schedule all the way through, so it's, everything's on track.
So we need an approval for this progress payment of the 143. We should expect one more progress payment, hopefully the final progress payment somewhere underneath the 57, 58,000.
Correct.
Closeout the project.
Correct.
Is that a motion that you're just?
I will make a motion to pay the invoice, to invoice, I don't see a number on it. There's a PO number, I guess?
It's application numbers.
Application number, ah, application number six to Millennium Builders and the amount of 143,199.59 as the next progress payment. Or I guess that's a motion for Director of Finance to pay that amount.
Authorize the Director of Finance to pay out of the capital reserve?
Um, yes, since this is coming from capital reserve, I'd add that on to the end of the motion. Authorize to pay out of the capital reserve.
Second?
Who did?
Kathy? Was Kathy? Any further discussion, questions? All in favor? Okay, second invoice is a progress payment for Field Turf USA. Mike, back to you.
Yeah, so, so again, this progress payment is for 988,753.50. Again, gauging where we are in the, in the process, we still will have a retainage of 806,787,050. Again, the field is in, the parking lot has been graded, the binder course is down, the electrical conduits are in, the pole stations are in, the islands are in, all the drainage is in place.
There's a picture of that on the screen, if you can see that.
So you can see what the parking lot looked like, I guess, three weeks ago when we had our last update. And that's what it looks like today with the gravel and the islands and the, again, binder course. Again, so we're gonna do this now. So here's, here's our synthetic surface with our two sports being played. And that's a look, a long view from the field to the stadium and all the way down. So, yeah, I, I think that the field right now, what's left to do is the light poles and the lighting. And then the, the electrical service will be done by Eversource. And that's all been paid for already. So that's all, all been encumbered within what we've paid already. And then there's bleachers that are, I think there's, I mean, next week or the week after. And then seeding the, seeding the area and finishing off the catch basin. And there's also a couple of small trees that, ornamental trees that'll be planted as well. And the top coat of the asphalt when everything is complete. So the asphalt will be done after everything else. So that does give you your, and your retainage of 806,787, I think is more than adequate for the amount of work that's left. And I don't know, as we're at this point, I did have a conversation with the engineer for, for the project. And I do have something that I, my phone kept dinging, which was annoying me. I know it was kind of rude. I kept answering it. But I did get something as far as if the board wanted to entertain, right now, the project was 3,289,000. But then at the last meeting, the conversation came up that eliminating the junior lot and the driveway and the stadium lot from the scope, again, they were in the original scope, but reducing that scope in order to fit at the $3 million threshold, which is what we had gone to the voters. But if the board wanted to consider it, there's a change order to eliminate the junior lot and the paving, which would be a reduction of 343,000. And then if the board wanted to entertain for $54,000, the contractor could chip seal and crack seal the existing stadium lot and repair the major breaches and the curbing and seal it, which would give you some longevity that it, that you would get greater duration, improve the quality of the stadium lot as it is, sits presently. And that would be $54,000. And that would bring you in right on budget. But again, that's something that is a board decision, but I did want to bring that to you. And I can send that to Cheryl, but I, I just received it as we were sitting here. So just thought I would mention it to you.
So right now, Mike, those, those items were on the, they're in the bounds to finish, right? So that's kind of what we're talking about, the 54, 750 for the?
We're moving on 17 and 18.
Yeah.
And then a change, so a change order to move those and then add in the additional chip seal in at 54.
Yes.
Back in.
Yes, I can send to Jason if he wants to put it up.
So we'll go below the 3.28, we'll go below 3 million and then we'll go back up to about 3 million if we add the 54 in.
It brings you back up to 3 million that we had started out with. And again.
So before you decide that, what's the motion or what's the amount for the current progress payment? Because you have to, you have to resolve that.
No, 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 without a doubt. I, I, I just didn't want us to get past the agenda item and into the next one. That was the only reason I mention it now. But your, your motion would be to approve 988,753.50.
All right, so I'll, I'll make the motion to pay invoice number 704443. There we go. So this is, okay, so move the region I'm for education except, this is, who is this? This is Field Turf?
Yeah.
Field Turf USA Incorporated invoice 70443 and the amount of 988,753.50 for progress payment on the George Barlow Nest and Fields Improvement Project and authorize the Director of Finance to pay the invoice using the proceeds from the bond sale. Similar to the motion last time. Very similar.
I have a motion on the floor. Second. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor? I think capital plan.
We want to discuss the change order now?
Do we want to discuss the change order now? Or is that?
Do you want to put it up, Jason? Do you want to put it up, Jason?
Did you email it to me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, sorry, you check.
Came from Field Turf, uh, just a little while ago, so.
So was the
down here, right, the seal coating?
Was the option to, um, just crack seal and chip seal that piece, was that ever in the, that was not ever in the original estimate?
The original e- estimate was to reclaim, to, to grind up reclaim the asphalt that's there now and put new asphalt down to make that whole area one continuous, um, uh, pavement. Um, and that was the approach that would give you your greatest longevity, that would, you know, because that stadium lot now is going on eight, almost nine years old, I guess. And, um, we parked buses down there. We had lots of things that occurred down there and it's kind of in, uh, less than optimal shape, shall we say? And we were looking to, again, you know, do that, uh, in the optimal way. So that was included in the original scope. So at the last meeting, the board, um, made the decision, again, to, um, to adhere to the original price, which was the 3 million. And so to eliminate those items of paving that would bring you, uh, down to your, um, original budgeted amount. So those were, uh, reduction in scope items that would least impact your playing surfaces and those type of things. So that's why that was proposed.
Oh, so that grinding up and repaving it is, is that same as the pave, is 17 and 18?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sorry.
So you can't help but notice that the 54,000 brings us exactly to our budget. So is there any, like, is that an accurate bid for that job?
So it's, what it is, is it's a, it's an estimation, uh, actually, it's a proposal. It's not an estimation, it's a proposal. But that was based, I think if you, if you read the scope, it, it's minor curb repair. It's a way to kind of, um, do something to keep it going, um, rather than nothing. It's an option. So that's why I say it's, it's a, it's a board decision. If the board opts, we'd rather save the 54,000 than you save the 54,000. This is just an option, again, that will, um, help to, uh, give you a little more usable life out of it. If, you know, if that's something the board wants to do.
Question, that was not in the original bid, doing this additional work for the 54?
The original bid included reclaiming this area and repaving it. So, um, the board opted at the last meeting not to do that.
I guess my question is, if we brought a new contractor in and said, how much would you charge us to do crack sealing and fix the curbs? Where do we think that, do we think $54,000 would be in the ballpark? It just seems like a big coincidence and maybe it's accurate, but...
Yeah, and, and that's something, again, the board can, can make a decision whether you wanted to bring in other vendors and stuff. I would, um, I would say that based on what I know, you're getting a really good deal for the 54, that you're getting more scope than you probably would get. This is kind of like, uh, try to keep, you know, try to help out and keep you going because we're meeting our, our budget number. It's, you know, I think that the chip sealing, the, the, the sealing, fixing the curbing, um, for that size area is probably more than 54,000. I think you're benefiting from the economies of scale, that they're already paving the other areas and they're already working there and they're mobilized, that that's why that number came in. But, um, again, that's...
Mike, approximately how many years do you think we could get out of that?
Yeah, I knew somebody was gonna ask that and I have, I
I know you don't know.
I don't know. I, I do know, again, the board thinks very deliberate and is very thoughtful, um, with their decisions. And, uh, the reason that the junior lot and the, and the driveways were included in the original scope was because I am concerned that the junior lot may degrade to the point where you're gonna have to, instead of just doing an overlay, you're gonna have to reclaim the whole area and, and start fresh. So it, the expense goes up. So it was done to be more cost efficient. That, that's why the scope was developed that way. But as far as how long does it last, you know, it's, it's, it's like your driveway, it's, it's hard to tell.
Just so I'm clear, I'm just trying to visualize it. So I think everybody knows where the junior lot is and the shape that it's in, right? It's in the worst shape of all of the lots. Then there's the main stadium lot as it currently was before the construction, right? So that's, that's line item, I guess that's
That's the bigger number.
18, that's line 18.
And the driveway is the road going between junior, next to the baseball field, connecting like, I guess, the end of Turney Road to the existing stadium lot. That's what we call the driveway.
And then the parking lot is essentially the new alternative of, you know, uh, uh, as opposed to you spending the 268. Is that fair?
As opposed to reclaiming it and repaving it, this would be chip sealing it, sealing it, fixing the curbs and, uh, restriping it.
Mike, how long are the, is the current contractor in position? Like, when is the paving expected to be done in the current lot that we're working in? And how long will the assets be deployed in that area to take advantage of this, you know, as you said, economies of scale? Are they gonna be there for another couple of weeks?
Well, and that's why we present it now is because, um, they're gonna start to put the light poles up. And so, um, obviously you want to do all the heavy work first and then work your way out with the paving so that you don't bring any heavy equipment on your fresh pavement. You know, it takes a while to cure. So, um, how long will it take? You know, it could take a few weeks, a couple of weeks, a few weeks, it could take a month, month and a half. It all depends on how long it takes to put the, the poles in. And a lot of that, um, a lot of that is, we're waiting on the, uh, utility company, Eversource, to kind of, uh, come in and pull the wires and, and, and do that stuff. But I would say that, um, if I had to guess, within the next month, they'll be finished.
How about you, um, hold on this question tonight? Schedule a facilities meeting or a buildings and ground co, you know, concurrent facilities meeting in a couple of weeks. Assess the timeline of when you need to make this decision by. Uh, we could even have the facilities meeting on campus and go down and take a look at the, the lot if you'd like and, and poke around. And by that time, we might, we might know more about when we need to make the decision by. That might correspond to the next board meeting. Or you may have to schedule a quick, uh, Zoom conversation or Zoom special meeting. So, just a suggestion.
It's certainly an option.
Reasonable to me.
I like that, I like that option as well.
Okay.
So it's gonna be okay with the contract to wait a little bit or?
Again, uh, um, if, if the timing starts to accelerate, all I can do is, you know, contact the board chair and, and you can schedule an emerg, you know, quicker meeting. I just, like I said, I didn't know what the, the plan was and wanted to make sure you had it as soon as I got it, so.
So just to recap though, on the option for this, we, if, if we don't do this, so if we take out line 17 and 18, we'll go under our initial budget, uh, by roughly the 54,000. So our option is to come in under budget by 50 some thousand, 54,000, or, uh, we do some additional patching maintenance on that lot and then be at our actual budgeted amount for the whole project.
Correct. Correct. If you opt not to do this, your, your, um, project will come in at 2,946.
Under the 300,000 or 3 million budget.
Does anyone have a different opinion or want to share if they have a preference now? Or would they, or, or is everyone okay with the facilities committee's suggestion?
Seems like a reasonable amount. I mean, I don't think that there's a lot of point to putting it off, but, I mean...
And how bad off is that lot? I, I have been down.
How bad is the lot?
If, if we, if we don't do it now and we pick it up in some other project, so the additional patching that we're talking about here.
You, you absolutely could. It's, it's like anything else. It's, it's like the junior lot. Can you still park cars? You can park cars in it, it's fine. You're gonna be okay. It's just, you know, will, will, will it degrade to the point where it costs you more later? That's the unknown. As far as that lot down there, um, for many years, we parked buses down there in between bus runs. And so, um, that lot is, has got many major cracks in it and it's missing big, hard sections of curving.
No potholes or, you know, hazard safety concerns, cracks, I mean...
Well, we were, we were lucky, we were able to, um, the town and shout out to the public works of the town, was very kind and came and filled many of our holes. I think, uh, it was 19 major holes they filled for us prior to the start of the school year. So, um, I don't know that there's any major potholes there. Um, I think they've been filled in, but the overall condition of the asphalt, I would say, is, um, deteriorating.
I mean, I will say to Karen's point, if anybody else is interested in this one, I also would be willing to be hearing about the, or looking at the condition of all of the lots. I actually walked there myself. Junior lot is in the worst shape and it's been in that shape for some time. So if we want to move forward, perhaps another option could be just get that over with, pave that and hold all the rest and just defer it to Karen, then that could move us toward deciding whether we had the other. Or we can defer and refer to the facilities and fields committee. And see how much time Mike can buy us.
I'll weigh in. I'm in, I'm inclined, for many reasons, to stay within our budget. It was, and, um, and if, if the 50, if the 54,000 gets us to a place that makes it, that adds years and makes it that much better, I would be comfortable with that. I, because we don't know what the building, where that's gonna stand, where that's gonna come out. We, when we get the RFP information, responses back, I think we'll have a lot more information. But I'm sensitive to not going over budget on a very, very major project. So I think to have some, to be conscious of the budget here is, that's where I would be leaning, short of somebody tells me the lots, yeah, it's, it's just, it's a disaster, it's unusable. It's a wreck, we can't plow it, it's gonna, it needs, short of that, I would be inclined to stay within budget, given that we've done a really good job with everything. It's, it's a lot of good facility improvement. It's a great new field. It's being used actively already.
So are you saying do the extra paving for the 54 that still keeps us at budget? Or go under budget, not do the 54?
I would...
We don't have to vote on it now.
Yeah, I, I mean, I
Both options will keep us in budget or under budget.
Right, I
We take the paving now.
I would be open to doing the fix, the crack sealing and the chip sealing that, if that actually adds longevity to the, to the lot, like several years. I don't, but I don't know that. So if it's not gonna do much, I would be inclined to not do it and wait until we actually repave the, you know, do it right.
I actually would be inclined to wait as well. I'd prefer to do it when we do the junior lot and hopefully we'll do the junior lot within the next year or two, three, right? Is where I was sort of hoping. But, um, that being said, I also am not opposed to going to take a look at it. So, uh, your suggestion, I thought was a good suggestion. But I wouldn't mind waiting and coming in under budget as well.
So why don't we, why don't we take Jason's suggestion and or
Get more information.
I think that's very reasonable.
I feel like we're all over the place.
Yep.
What's the impact on, if, if the, for doing the other, the chip sealing on usability? Uh, how many days will a lot not be usable?
I mean, how long will you not be able to drive on it? It's, it's, it's not long, it's a day, day or two.
Is the chip sealing like what they do on the roads in Easton? They put the gravel over it with the oil and then they, I mean...
No, it's, it's, that, that's, um, that's something different. But chip sealing, yeah, is, is, um, it's a process by which they, they fill the cracks and, and, um, and the major holes with, um, a solution of asphalt and chips in it. It kind of fills it in, it's, um, you, they do it a lot on roads that, um, it, it ends up giving you a few more years before you have to repave it. You know, it's kind of like, um, it's different, like a driveway sealer is something that really doesn't give you any longevity, just makes it look nice. You know, doing chip sealing and stuff like that does give you, um, more longevity, greater longevity. So, um, and it just, just, you know, if you, you couldn't chip seal the junior lot, that's beyond the point that you can chip seal, but, um, you could chip seal the stadium, that's...
Alrighty. Alright, facilities committee, uh, it's back to you.
Okay.
Okay, capital plan.
Capital plan. So, uh, Mike and I will hit the high points on the capital plan and then we actually have the capital plan to show you. Before we talk about the capital plan, I want to give you an update on the maintenance garage roof, which was, which was mentioned. And if you remember, uh, we did put some funds towards the maintenance garage roof in, at the end of the year. Uh, and Mike has an update, um, for the, for the, for that project. And actually, here's a picture on the left of the, the maintenance garage where we have some very expensive equipment. And the, the maintenance garage roof is beyond end of life, uh, which is why we decided to invest, invest in that immediately. But there's something else we uncovered recently.
Is that where the John Deere tractor is at the store?
It is. All, all the tractors are
New Gators in there, right?
The new, new Gator is due, so it's not here yet. But, but the, uh, the John Deere is in there, the, the tractor. And so, again, as we kind of had outlined, um, the maintenance garage roof, uh, was beyond its, its useful life. It needed to be replaced. We walked the roof, uh, on top, we stood on the roof. The contractor came in and gave a surprise for, um, uh, putting a new roof on it. When they started to, um, take off the old fascia and, uh, the, um, surrounding perimeter of the roof, we did uncover, as you can see in the picture on the right, that, um, the back of the roof, uh, is rotted. And so what you're looking at there is, is the, where the wooden fascia is and, and the end of the, the beams. But that roof actually has a steel decking that spans the, um, it goes across the entire span. So the steel decking goes from each, you know, side of the building and is the support for the roof. The existing steel decking is in great shape throughout most of the building, but that back section, um, was repaired over the years and, and more roofing material was just piled on top of the previously rotting roof to just kind of keep piling it on and, and keep it going. And obviously that was something that was not visible. And obviously that was something that was not visible when we were, um, looking at, uh, replacing the roof. So as, as that was torn off, um, we discovered that structurally, it's just not sound that the back, um, like four, four and a half feet of the back of the roof, um, the steel decking is compromised and, uh, needs to be replaced.
The long story short, you don't replace the roof on a faulty structure. We've gotta repair the structure and then put the roof, uh, on top of the, of the, of the structure. So we have an updated price for you, which we'll be happy to detail in the capital plan. So keep that in mind and we'll come back to that in a second.
Is, is there a reason there's a rag hanging out of the side of the building?
I'm hoping you didn't see that. I asked the same question. We should probably plug that hole.
Pull that out.
That is a hole.
Pull that rag out.
All I can say is there will not be a rag in the back when, uh, the project is complete.
So this is the projector project, which we also approved out of end of year funds and we were so grateful for that project. Convocation had, uh, a whole different feel, a professional feel, because, um, previously we had one of those projectors that you see, uh, uh, presenting in the library right now and that size screen in an auditorium, which was obviously undersized and not very useful. And so the projector project was to, um, put a, a much larger projector in that could, that, that was thirty feet, that could project a screen of thirty feet and, and be a much better tool in that space. Not to mention, um, could potentially be used in our theater programs as well. So we, uh, we have the projector. We actually tried out the model during convocation. It works really well and we, we installed a temporary screen as to the size that we want it to be. Um, not, not something like this, which is probably nine feet, but actually thirty feet. So if you, if you came to convocation, you would have been really, you would have noticed right, right away the size of the screen. So we have an update on that project in the capital plan as well, because, um, the, the cost of the projector was approximately thirty thousand dollars. We also need to upgrade the screen because we can't have, you know, the best projector possible for that space projecting on a postage stamp, which would be the size of that screen. So, uh, we, we have a change reflected in the, the capital plan for that project as well. So those two, uh, requests together, you can see the original funding for the auditorium projector system was approximately thirty-five thousand dollars. The original estimate for the maintenance garage roof was twenty-nine thousand dollars. There's an additional request for approximately fourteen thousand dollars for the screen, which includes installation for the auditorium and approximately seven thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars for the decking, which we described that we need to do before we put the roof on. And so when we get into the capital plan, which I'm now gonna bring up, so you can see it, actually, where is the capital plan? Here it is. Um, so for your consideration, you can see here that we had, uh, these projects outlaid in the, um, the capital plan. And in column D is the total cost of the project, uh, for the, the auditorium project, uh, line fifteen of forty-seven thousand and fifty dollars. Thirty-three thousand dollars was approved in end of year funds, which is column E. But really, the total cost of the project, if you consider installation and the screen, is actually an additional fourteen thousand and fifty dollars. Okay? So what we're asking is for you to consider the total cost of the auditorium projector project at forty-seven thousand and fifty dollars and, um, encumber or, or remove fourteen thousand and fifty dollars from the capital reserve fund to complete the project. And so therefore, we would need to add that to the, the capital plan. And the same, the same for the roof. The initial, um, cost, uh, estimate for the roof was approximately thirty thousand dollars, which we took out of end of year funds. But in column D, we've updated that estimate to include the structural repairs for a total cost of thirty-seven thousand six hundred and eighty dollars, which would mean that we would be taking approximately seven thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars out of the capital plan. So we cannot take the fourteen thousand and the seven thousand out of operations because we are, we're doing some other repairs right now and, and that would really lead, lead us pretty lean for the year. So normally a seven thousand dollar cost, you wouldn't take out of capital. But if you consider that as part of the total cost and you put that in the plan, then, then we can take it out of the capital plan. And so, uh, the capital plan modifications reflect those two changes.
How much do we have left?
I was just saying, can you scroll down so we can see the total? So what's our total? And then if we take another twenty-two thousand out for these items, what does that leave us?
So, um, I guess I, the question for Sarah and Mike is, does the seven?
Those balances do not reflect the additional contribution at the end of the year.
If they, correct.
Okay. So the, the additional contribution that we made at the end of year is not included in that?
Correct.
Correct. So you, you take your two oh one.
Two oh one and then add.
Add your five, whatever it was for.
And please add four ninety-five, one ten.
You're adding four ninety-five, one ten to which number? The seven, seven, six?
No.
So you have six ninety-six.
To the two oh one?
One seventy-one. One seventy-nine, sixty-five.
Okay.
Just like six hundred K.
Six ninety-six, you said?
Six ninety-six.
Six, six, take twenty-two out.
One seventy-nine.
Six seventy, roughly.
And Sarah, the unencumbered funds from the previous chart, that one seventy-three thousand, roughly it was, if that's not all spent, that has, that could not be transferred to this.
No.
That's, that's unrelated.
That is correct.
That's untouchable.
That is, that is just going to healthcare. That is correct.
So.
But a good question.
Roughly, if we take the additional two items, the twenty-two out from the new balance of six something, we're gonna end up around.
Six ninety-six.
Six ninety, you take the twenty-two, we're gonna be end up around six seventy in our capital, somewhere in that range.
Right.
Available.
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 Anything else?
Six ninety-two.
What else is on the plan for this year?
I mean, it's, you're gonna, it's gonna have to get small here for a second.
Yeah, it's all right.
While you're doing that, can I ask a screen question? The new screen is permanently mounted. Is that how it, is that?
Yes.
How it works?
Yeah. And just to expand upon what Jason said, originally, um, we looked at two projectors and, and the projector that, um, we purchased is one that we think will be able to be utilized, uh, for theater productions and stuff like that. It's, it's got a long throw lens that can project all the way to the scrim in the back, so it can be used for scenery and things like that. However, it doesn't work when you do convocation or if you wanna do movie night or you wanna do a presentation in the, in the auditorium, because you can't see it when you're in the wings, cause it's way too far back. And the, the screen that we have now that's in the front is, is like a postage stamp when you put that big, um, image on there. So that's what really precipitated that we needed to do, um, the screen as well in order to utilize that projector.
And the screen you saw was, um, was something we ordered off Amazon for like two hundred and something dollars. That was, it's literally like a, like a sheet.
And it was.
We put up.
Right.
And, um, Mike did an excellent job of connecting that to existing materials that we had and balancing it onto ladders.
But that to be our permanent solution?
No. And, and I think what was great though is that we were able to, even, even people sitting in the wings at convocation could still see the screen, which was really great. It gives you, you know, you know, much increased viewer, uh, um, proportion so that you can, you know, get more people to, uh, enjoy the presentation.
Is the projector controllable and the new screen, would that be controllable from the sound booth? Like, you know, or no, that's only for play, for the productions?
Well, it, no, it, it can be. The, the projector will have a, a control and a remote control from the, from the booth. And the, um, the screen currently has a, um, a switch that's on the front of the stage, but the new one would also have a, a wall switch that would operate the, uh, the screen as well.
I don't see anything else in twenty-three, twenty-four right now.
I don't think we put anything. I guess I was.
I think we were waiting to.
Do we wanna put in there? I mean, I, I'm, personally, I'm okay doing the other two items, getting us down to the six seventy, but I would like to update the plan. Like, is there anything else that we need to do off of the plan so that we can take that money out and say, this is what our reserve is for an, an emergency if we do have anything else? Cause otherwise I don't wanna dip below the six seventy or so, just because we could have a major item that we would have to.
Can we? Correct. So typically, we don't like to go below two hundred thousand in case a major piece of equipment fails. But then also I think what Jason was gonna say is that we, we would do that work as part of the facilities committee to, um.
Right.
Administration would give recommendations. Just been early, we haven't gotten there yet.
We're gonna need to have a big meeting.
Yeah.
We haven't gotten there yet, you know?
Because there's still a lot of items that are high priority and if, yeah, if we can move one of them into this year and use some of the money without totally draining capital, we should.
Yes.
We should do that and get those projects going.
Do you think it's acceptable for you to approve those two items tonight so we can update it as of tonight, but then have another meeting to kind of look forward? So we can kind of close out the auditorium project and the, and, and the additional roofing? Do you think that's something you're comfortable with?
Somebody wanna make a motion?
Do we need to do two motions, update the capital plan and then approve the additional spending?
There may be a slide that has motions.
They don't.
So I have to say.
Cause we have to add these onto the plan first and then approve the spending.
There might.
Hey, thank you.
And the screen you could install quickly, that would be in this soon?
Yes.
Yeah.
The roof be fixed before the new gator goes in there?
What's that?
Can the roof be fixed before the new equipment goes in there?
Yes, well, and just, just so you know, it, it's not leaking on the equipment. I know there's a tarp and it's not the greatest look for us right now, but what we needed to do was, um, make sure that the structural steel was available and ordered. And obviously we weren't gonna do anything until we had board approval and everyone was aware of it. So, um, the tarp has been on for a couple of weeks as we're waiting for that, but no, nothing has been, uh, compromised inside.
This, this is one motion. I would, I would make this motion. Do I need to read it out loud? I move that the Region Nine Board of Education adds the auditorium projector project to the capital plan for the remaining fourteen thousand fifty dollars for screen and amend the capital plan to reflect the needed structural repairs to the outbuilding roofing project in the amount of seven thousand six hundred eighty-two dollars.
That would be motion one, I guess.
So I'll, I'll second that motion for commending the capital plan.
Further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
So now we need a motion to spend the money?
There you go.
We have that motion on the slide?
We don't have that on the screen. I'm sorry, I didn't.
Gotta create that one.
So need to be one, just gonna be two sep, one motion for both?
You could probably do one for both as long, but it's up to you. It's at the chair's discretion.
As long as it's clear.
So how about I, I try to make a motion that the Region Nine Board of Education authorize the Director of Finance and Operations to, um, fund the auditorium projector project in the amount of fourteen thousand fifty dollars for the screen, uh, out of capital and, uh, the additional seven thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars for the outbuilding roofing project also out of capital fund.
I'll second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion? Karen, I think you were gonna say something. Discussion? Comment? No? Okay. All in favor?
Sorry, who seconded that one? Todd?
I seconded, yeah.
Todd. Okay, uh, public comment. Name is the public two minutes, uh, name, road, town. Hearing none. Uh, board member comment?
I, I just had a, um, I know that the, uh, scores have been made publicly available on the portal for the Connecticut site. So the, for both the SATs by district and the Connecticut State standardized testing results are available. I look forward to the, I know typically that's an October, um, presentation and, um, I look forward to those results in October, seeing your presentation in October.
Okay. Usually the new director of special education delivers that report, so we look forward to that.
Oh, right.
Thank you, thank you, Catherine.
Thirty, thirty-five, okay, thirty slides.
With the new facilities manager.
I have to give that, isn't it?
Yeah, definitely.
Happy to do that.
Any other, any other board member comment? All right, welcome back to school, everyone. That's Mike, that's my comment. Uh, hearing nothing else, a motion to adjourn. That's Karen and, and Catherine. All right, unanimous. Thanks, everyone.
Okay, thank you.